Start, I think, Mr. Mayor, I believe you might have the indication this morning, is that correct?
Look, let me pray. God, we're grateful again that we can come together to look at our county. Father, we ask that you would guide us in each and everything that we do, that Father, that what we do would be for the benefit of the citizens of our county, but Father, that we might look to you for guidance and direction. We're thankful, Father, that we have been elected as commissioners here to oversee the budget of our county. Father, we ask for your guidance, that we might, again, decide how to spend this money in our budget according to your will and to the benefit of the citizens of Wayne County. These things I ask in your name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Walters, you're first. You'll come on up. And good morning to you.
We are six.
Give us a second look. I don't know if you want to go. Questions in your mouth.
And we are going to recycle all this paper.
Yeah, good. Need to do that.
Well, where are you at?
Uh, we're at...
Six twenty-four.
Yeah, six twenty-four.
Down, down here.
Way down in here, huh? Are you a blue tab?
No, he's beyond the blue tab.
He's beyond the blue tab. Really? Man, he's way back there. He got tucked too high.
That would be good stuff.
He's beyond street land, blasted.
Tab six twenty-four. So I'm with the bottom of the script.
This is a two fifty.
So it looks like your revenues and your expenses are going to stay about the same. Any big changes anywhere that I'm not seeing?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one question that I had is, on your scrap tire disposal, you've got a hundred and sixty-seven coming in, a hundred and eighty going out. That, that don't sound good.
Well, we get the majority of that back, almost all of it, back from the state. But they, they have a scrap tire fund, and we have to request that monies, but we, they don't reimburse us the entire amount, but...
So it's normal that you actually have to subsidize it. Do you have a meter there on your sewer?
Yes, sir.
There is a meter specifically?
That's right. When it leaves our side, it's metered.
And is that your meter or?
Yes.
The county meter?
It's ours.
Your meter? Do you have that monitored any?
Yes.
You do? So they check it to make sure it's accurate?
That's right. You're saying because it's way down?
No, no. Our, our, our costs are going up on the sewer, and you're one of the primary individuals that use that service, and I'm just wondering whether or not we're getting accurate readings on...
We are. What happened with that was when we, when we completed the footprint of the sale, we no longer have to treat stormwater as wastewater. Then, you know, when we filled the hole up, then now it's, it's run, we could treat it as stormwater. It goes through our stormwater retaining ponds, but it doesn't have to be treated. So, once we did that, that cut way down on the, the water we were sending to be treated. And that made a huge difference for us, you know.
Okay. And then you've got a hundred and seventy as a line item on building structures and improvement. What, what's that all about?
We've got a, we've got a shelter right behind our maintenance shop, and what we're wanting to do is make two bigger stalls where we can bring the bigger equipment in. And we've put this in in the last several years, and it's been taken out, but as the equipment's gotten bigger...
We're kind of moving in that direction this time.
But as the equipment's gotten bigger, what we were trying to do is being a little proactive and getting it built before. The new compactor we've got now is a little bigger than the, the older eight-twenty system we have, and it won't fit in there, so we're having to do the maintenance outside. We want to obviously be able to pull it inside the shop. So we've got the shelter and the concrete floor there. We just want to close it in and put a couple of doors up and...
And my question to the ladies, is that his dollars, that one seventy, that's coming out of his fund balance? Is that correct? Not out of ours, but out of his?
It's a complete enterprise fund, whatever.
I just wanted to verify that, so...
And he really doesn't have to use his fund balance, his, his usual fees cover it.
He has no transfers from Fund One Ten or earnings appropriated.
He has no what?
He has no transfers from Fund One Ten, and he, he's not even appropriating fund balances.
His fees cover it.
We would like to negotiate a loan from your fund balance.
Remember, these are expenditures in this part of the city.
And the only other thing I saw was a, a, a big increase in your office supplies. It jumped from the current appropriation of thirty-six up to sixty-one. What in the world are you buying in the office?
Lee, I'm going to ask, Lee, what was the increase on that?
That's a line item, two sixty-one.
Oh, that's not, that's not office. That's, that's where you got the surplus.
That's what now?
Any equipment under five thousand is not accounted.
Well, okay, whatever. That line item increased dramatically. What are you buying?
Well, we've got boxes in here. Anything under five thousand would be, our boxes, which is twelve thousand dollars, that would be under that, because they're under five thousand apiece. Anything we buy under five thousand would be out of that. And I could go through, I know, I know, just looking at this, um, we've got some compactor boxes we're buying. We've got some shop equipment that we're replacing, a welder, and some stuff like, just, just different items, you know, that we're replacing. I know we've got some shop equipment in there, and I'd have to go through.
And then another question for the ladies. The indirect cost, you can see a benefit to us if that were a little bit higher. Are we accurate in regards to the indirect cost?
We, we try very hard. It's obviously an estimate, but we do try very hard to make that as true as possible, because even like for DSS, we, we get reimbursed. So we'll make sure that our estimates are correct for the next step.
Good answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of the things I, I think is interesting, and you may hear this from the City of Goldsboro, is there was a request for us to look at lowering our tipping fees. And, you know, and I appreciate Tim giving us this information. We are the lowest in our region, so at thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. So, so if you hear any words from, you know, the City of Goldsboro...
I can, I can answer that for you, but I want to work the cameras and...
But, but I just want to let you, you may hear that.
How much are the others around us?
Uh, this is what he handed out.
He just gave it out? Oh, she did. Okay. I'll say that.
Oh, there it is.
She's giving me some notion. Hard to keep up with it.
I think our household fees and our tipping fees are, we're in really good shape, and we're doing well at that, so...
Leonor County is fifty dollars a ton.
Is that a part of county government over there? Or is it enterprise fund?
It's enterprise.
But it's still county government?
But it's still, you know...
Well, yeah. It's a difference if you run it as a department versus an enterprise fund. Of course, Wilson's at fifty-two.
That's what I didn't say. And we're still good at this, and, but thanks for keeping ours. Yeah.
I think we, I think we've done an excellent job, and one of, probably one of the main reasons is we were, we were fortunate enough to buy the property we have and surrounding the landfill where we don't have to purchase cover material. That's, that's probably the biggest, one of the biggest savings we've...
Well, the other interesting thing is this household fee of forty-five dollars, Johnson County a hundred dollars, Leonor County eighty-six. Uh, I mean, we're nowhere near what the surrounding counties are, are charging. I mean, that's... You need to toot your horn on that. I mean, that's, that's good.
Well, we're proud of that, and I think, I think a lot of the, a lot of changes we made over the years, we try, we do try to, to run as lean as we can, and I think we do a good job of that.
Maybe those cow, those people are throwing away more expensive stuff than we are.
Send a copy of that to Chuck.
Playing on me?
Sure.
Laying all jokes aside, now this, are we too low?
No, sir. Just right.
Yeah, I think we are. I think we are.
Especially now, you know, even our, our revenues this year are going to exceed expenditures in the budget, so...
It's amazing.
Who would have ever thought the landfill into jail would be a profit center?
I have a question. Now, we're still, we're still doing, selling the methane gas out there?
Excuse me now?
The project that we have, the methane?
Okay.
I think that's one of the reasons why, one of the things that, that's making us lower in our costs.
That has helped, because they do, they do cover all the costs when we install new wells and any maintenance to the, the well field, so, yeah, it, it saved us a lot of money.
Yeah, that's been...
We don't make that, we probably make fifty grand a year off of it, but it's the savings in, you know, each well seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, and we're not one stood in the bill, so...
That program's been going on how many years now?
About ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, uh...
About ten years.
It's a good program.
So that, those dollars are really going to never stop, because it's going to always be...
Well, after about thirty-five years, it'll be...
Chipped out.
Pretty much, yeah. Everything's kind of decomposed by then, and it's kind of, it'll kind of level.
Well, I guess I was thinking about, as you go to new spots, they...
That's right. But that's the reason they wanted to do it with our facility, because we are still, you know, they, they've gone through some closed landfills. The problem with that is, if you go in at a twenty-year mark, you got maybe fifteen years, and your prime gas production's over with by that time. So we're still putting waste in the ground, so that's exactly, it's going to continue for as long as we're there, you know.
Right. It's a good program.
Yeah, it's been great.
Yeah. Any more questions, Mr. Tim?
Mr. Tim, we, uh, was going to change your green landfill shirt. We're going to let you keep it now that you're making us a lot of money.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I know the guys will be tickled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Animal Control, forty-three eighty. Animal Control. You just plan on standing up there for a while? If I can get forty-three eighty, if I can get three-...
Oh, he's, he's way back at forty-four.
Yeah.
You're not in my book.
John, I forgot that was a good rebate.
Forty-three eighty. Got a bit of a, got a bump there in salary, it looks like. Is that just from raises or?
Hold up, Frank. Let me have a seat right there. I've got Mr. Frank Saws, my Animal Services Manager, with me.
I know you reduced the overtime stuff, but there's a little bit in salary and wages that's gone up, is it because we got people that were part-time with full-time or something, or?
Frank, come on up. Talk about your personnel.
What was the question?
Got a slight bump up in salary and wages, but yet you've got, you know, you've reduced the overtime. Is that, did we make some people full-time, or?
What, a reduction in the overtime was because last year was the first time we had rejected for overtime. Previously to that, we were doing comp time, so we didn't have a figure to go on, so we did a best estimate. After a year, we kind of see where we stand as far as how much overtime we make, so that's the reduction that you see.
Are you fully staffed at this time?
At this time, no. Missing one part-time person.
Mr. Chairman, since you're on that subject, I have some real issues with that, and here's why I've got issues. We no longer are providing service to the City of Goldsboro, which was representing about fifty percent of the, the, the animals that were having to be handled. If you've cut your workload by fifty percent, I don't see any reduction in, in personnel. In fact, you're saying that you've got one open position that you're looking to fill. Workload has dramatically decreased, and as such, you all need to look very strongly at your staffing levels. Instead, we are going up rather than going down.
The, when we took Goldsboro, the biggest thing that changed was the enforcement side. When we took Goldsboro, of course, we requested two additional personnel. The only thing that's going to change is the who enforces it. We're going to still be getting all the animals from Goldsboro, so the shelter staff is still going to be needed, and this is a part-time position, is a shelter-to-staff position.
Maybe Mel will try to explain to you, but what I'm saying is, I mean, we're splitting hairs here. If you don't have to, if fifty percent of your enforcement of going out and actually having to handle calls is down by fifty percent, then...
Right. Well, what happened?
To reduce your staff.
When we took on the City of Goldsboro on a trial basis, we did not increase the personnel, the staff that we had that were going out and doing enforcement. That's why we had to go up on overtime, because then we started using staff a whole lot more in the anticipation that if we took on Goldsboro, we were going to request two additional enforcement officers, whereas now, you know, we're, we're still handling the City of Goldsboro until end of June, I believe. And then we'll go back to what we were doing prior to, but we're still using the same amount of staff prior to the City of Goldsboro than what we are now.
I have a question. You still have to have, how many do we have per shift on the enforcement?
It's four personnel.
Four personnel, so regard, we still have the same amount of before Goldsboro and after Goldsboro? Well, it's just the workload...
You're not going to win this argument. The point being is that if for the last year, you had four staffers, and they were handling all of Wayne County and all of Goldsboro, and you had nineteen thousand dollars worth of overtime, I mean, that's what it is. With, with that in mind, if that's, if that workload has been reduced by fifty percent, then staffing should be reduced some. I didn't say by fifty percent, but it should ought to be reduced some.
Oh, Mayor, I just want to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I see a little bit...
Am I wrong?
Between ten o'clock, between ten o'clock and twelve o'clock on any given date, you got to go out and force something, and you got a certain number of people that's got to do enforcement. On Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, Goldsboro didn't have anyone. Still had the same people in place to go and force between ten and twenty. Then all of a sudden, Goldsboro had some. In my head, that means that those people who were working have got to go enforce a little bit faster, get more in between those two hours. I, I just sort of see it as, if, you've got to have a certain number of people in place to do a job. Just like selling hamburgers and anything else. If you, if it's a rush hour, you've got to work fast. If it's not, there's time, but you still got to have people in place. I, I don't, I don't, Joe, I don't see how they could, how it would, right, change dramatically, because between ten and twelve, you may have a lot more or some less, but you still got to have a certain number of people to do the job. I, I mostly miss it some.
I have a question. Are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
I have a question. In the, last year, last year's budget, did you, were, did that budget reflect, were you fully staffed last year under last year's budget?
With the enforcement officers?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
How about your staff? Were you fully staffed?
For the most part, yes. For the most part.
Okay. So, has the increase come from adding, adding some, adding some positions or pay increases? If you, you've got the same people now, is that correct? Have you added, have you added any since last year's budget?
No, sir, no new positions.
Okay, so, question is, where's the increase?
That's about four thousand dollars.
And then we do, once they get, when we, when we bring in a new officer, once he gets his euthanasia, once he gets certain criteria, he goes up to a, a Officer Two, and that's a pay increase, and I think we've seen that...
Yes, sir.
Since that budget, too.
Before you started picking it up for the city, were you, oh, weren't you, correct me if I'm wrong, weren't you already on weekends and all, having to, you're still having to send people to the city? I mean, they got an enforcement officer, but were they bringing the animals to the shelter, or, I mean?
They, it would vary. They would either bring them to us, or we can meet them on site and pick it up from them.
Now, their animal control officer for the city only works seven AM to four PM on weekends.
That's what I'm getting at.
They don't do nights and weekends.
So on nights and weekends...
We are called to assist.
Right, right. But when, when does come July one, when they start back doing it, is that going to be the same case? I mean, or, or nobody knows, I mean?
We don't know.
How many, how many officers did they have?
One.
One? And they, and, what, fifty-one, fifty-two percent of the calls are in the city?
But the, the police department still does the majority of the enforcement.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, their animal patrol officer handles the animal calls, but all the enforcement is done by Goldsboro Police Department.
Okay, all right, okay. And, uh, God, I had one more question. Go ahead, Joe, I think about what I've...
Will you do a review of your staffing letters, levels? That's all I'm asking.
I'm writing now, right now.
Now, let me ask this. Why all of a sudden have we got a 401K retirement, five percent law enforcement in your line item?
Because our chief animal control officer is now sworn to do criminal, to enforce criminal ordinances for animal...
And, and that's something that had been worked on with our enforcement officers only, that they were sworn so that they could actually write tickets and, and carry a weapon.
Before, they were able to call Sheriff's Department.
So let me get, get this straight. Before they were enforcing our ordinance, they were providing all of the services, but now we are moved them into law enforcement, so therefore we're adding all of the benefits that a sworn deputy would, would in fact have. Is that correct?
If you are sworn, yes, sir, you, you do get the five percent 401K.
I wasn't aware that we've been moving animal control officers into law enforcement.
It's not been done. I'm the only sworn, I'm the only sworn person there now.
Is this the beginning, though, of actually moving all enforcement officers over to sworn deputies?
That's what we had talked about with the previous...
Who talked about it?
With the previous manager. He was the one that approved to send our chief animal control officer through.
You are aware of the fact, as you do that, you are greatly increasing the cost to this county for this department. You're going to increase it because you're adding those benefits that a deputy would have.
But, but I also think that there is a, a benefit to, to the enforcement side as well, that we can carry an actual weapon, that, that, that there's...
Was any board member aware that that was happening?
Yes, sir.
I would approve it.
The what?
Mr. Wood approved it.
I knew about it. If he, if he is going to be able to write tickets on violators, he can't do it unless he has the certification.
Right.
All right.
And, and the other thing he's able to do with is, whenever they've got to go pick up a dog, today's laws, you've got to get a warrant done, you've got to swear the warrant out, you've got to go and serve the warrant. Used to, we had sheriff's office do that, and now he can do that as well.
So we used to handle it from the standpoint of having a deputy sheriff...
Would have to come out and do it.
Yes, sir.
Would have to pull him off the street to come help. Now, Saws can do everything from end to end.
I'm through.
Okay. Does that, having that situation, does that not cut down the time per, per case, if you will, when you go, if you're able to go ahead and do the paperwork and not wait on someone?
Yes, sir.
So that, what you're saying is, that could, that could help your efficiency, if you will?
Correct.
Okay. I want to back up for one second. When, on the previous item that we left, when does, when we go and pick up for the city on the weekends, we actually send one of our people to pick up, is, do we get reimbursed from the city?
If they, is, that's not on a regular basis.
Yeah, but when it happens, do we get reimbursed?
Yes, sir.
Why?
That's my question.
We've never charged them.
Well, I think, I think I'd like to see you take a look at that also. What do you think, Commissioner?
Oh, I totally agree. I mean, it's their responsibility. We, we're going to be all things to all people and bear all the costs associated. I mean, there, there are limits.
Mr. Chairman. Getting, getting back to Frank being a sworn officer, what I think to say is not going to help their budget one bit, but they were tying up a deputy that could have been somewhere else doing something a whole lot more important. I mean, it, it's, it's not going to help their budget any, but it's still going to free a deputy up for the sheriff that could be somewhere else doing something a whole lot more important than worrying about a dog or a cat.
I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, and that would be great if you saw a reduction in the sheriff. You see what I'm saying? If we save money there, but there's no savings here. All we're doing is increasing the bottom line.
I, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm looking at the safety factor, too. I mean, there's, there's more, there's more into this than, than just the money. And now, if that was twenty-one thousand dollars instead of twenty-one hundred, I'd, I'd, you know, I'd be, I'd be somewhat upset, but...
I was going to say, I knew...
But I was aware that, that Frank was going to school to be a sworn officer.
Yeah, Mr. Wood advised me, and, and Mel had, too, that I'm not so sure we need to expand the program in this, but that was...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a slightly different question. You're, you're sworn, and you're carrying a badge, gun, and gun?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute.
Don't you call him Bart?
No, no. No, all I want to do, all I want to do is make sure that the training that you're getting is equivalent to what a deputy would have, putting you in a situation where you have a badge and a gun.
Well, we go through the exact same program.
That's my concern. That's, that's the only concern I would have. I would...
He has to follow the sheriff's standards.
That's what I, that's...
Exactly like any other...
That's my only concern right there, is that, uh, once you start shifting... That's my only concern right there is that, uh, once you start shifting duties or your level of responsibility or your, whatever comes into place, you have all of the necessary training and safeguards and so forth that any deputy who would have come out there would have.
He didn't get his certification from Beverly Dean's by not doing what he's supposed to do. She don't, she don't kill nobody.
All right.
Question for me. Is our veterinary services, why it gets jumped up? What is happening there?
Yes, sir. What we're looking at, we're wanting to attempt to enhance and improve the veterinary services. What's happening right now is she's getting behind, and we're trying to get her some more hours in there. Because we, we get as far as, what, a month or two behind?
Yes, yes.
On trying to get the animals spayed or neutered and then out, out the door on adoption.
Can I follow up on that? Am I correct in saying that we are going ahead and spading, neuting, neutering all animals that come into the shelter?
Not all, just the ones before they're adopted out.
So we, we provide that free of charge?
It's included in the adoption fee, yes, sir.
It's included in the adoption fee. What is our adoption fee?
$65.
And our cost of neutering or spading?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Approximately.
If you went to, if you went to a veterinarian's office, it'd a couple hundred dollars.
Couple of hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
But our, but our charger would probably be 35, 40 dollars?
Part of that is, we want to make sure we can get, we want to be an option to get animals out and, and get them adopted. So, so we are the low-cost alternative to, instead of going to a pet store. So that's.
But what are we paying to our veterinarian to provide that?
Uh, she is getting, I think it's 30,000 a year.
Or per, per spade neuter?
Oh, I, I don't have that number.
You've got to guess.
A number of adoptions we've done, and then we can divide it by our salary and see what it's coming up to. And this is a, this is a comparison that we've done with some surrounding counties. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not even leave you out of that.
What'd you say, you get only 500 dollars?
And just to explain, just a little bit on this.
You've got a penalty here if a, a animal attacks and kills a human being, $500.
That's just a.
Are you kidding me?
No, that's just a civil, that's a civil penalty, but if you look at this.
Well, I would think it would be.
Well, there's still criminal charges. This is just on the civil side. If you'll, if you'll take a look, what you see in the black is currently what our fee schedule is. What you see in the red is what it'll change once we do the adoption of the new animal control ordinance that council's working on. And then, because see, right now, we don't have any penalties if you don't see it in, in red. For those that you, that you were just talking about, we don't have a penalty for that. It's a criminal penalty, but not a civil penalty.
You have an estimate of how much, many more dollars I'd have to bring in, once we get there?
This here? Once we can go and enforce it criminally, we can. Civil is very hard to, to get the money, if you want to.
Yeah, if I can. The board has a copy of what Mel and I put together. So we increased the civil fees. What we added was, and this kind of goes to the sworn officer aspect of it, too, what we added was a criminal aspect of it. I think third time, isn't that right? So third incident within a specified period of time, then we can actually charge you criminally, which would be a class three misdemeanor, but it's more severe. So there's that aspect of it, too. So obviously, the board hadn't adopted it yet, but if we do, the fees go up, and our idea was we could work with the district attorney's office and maybe, you know, collect some of those fees as part of plea arrangements or something like that, try to increase those costs.
The problem we run into is if they, like on the penalties right now, first offense is $50. It's a civil penalty. They don't ever pay it. We send them a notice, they still don't pay it. In order for us to get that reimbursement back, it cost us $139 to go to court to get $50 back. And that's on the civil side. So now, talking with Andrew, we are trying to look at the criminal side, because that gets people's attention a little more. You know, when you get a civil summons, that's, that's one thing. When you get a criminal summons, that's, that's a whole different ball.
Why wouldn't you use debt settle?
We have, we have.
We do.
Very little from that.
From going through the department revenue and?
And Mr. Trenica, six, eight months ago, we took a stat that we had, and your intern went and pulled the tax records.
We, and we were trying to see if there was any way, but it was either all rentals, it was all, there was no assets that the people had, so it was just not worth personally.
And a lot of times with these, when you bring a criminal ordinance against somebody, it's a class three misdemeanor, so it's really low, but at the same time, it is a criminal conviction. So generally speaking, in some other counties, what, what's done, not only with animal control, but if you have solid ways, sometimes you can work out a plea arrangement where if they come in compliance with all civil penalties, then we would be agreeable to a dismissal or some sort of discharge. So it's extra leverage for us to try to get some of that money, if we can work with the district attorney's office on it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, moving on to 231-001 Animal Control Program, and that has, you're increasing that to 12-5. Wow. What, what, what were you speaking of there?
Uh, we basically moved a, our cat litter to that line item. We took it out of.
Yeah, moved from.
211.
211. It was a better fit in that line item than it was the other.
Best rate in the janitor's block went down.
It went down the same amount as that one.
I was going to ask you on 261, the office supplies, non-capital, I'm sorry, non-capital computer. Are we getting ready to buy a computer or something? We're going for a thousand, eighty for $400?
That should be 262.
Yes.
Yes, sir. What we were looking at there was getting three MDTs and mobile data terminals, laptop computers for the officer's cars. Right now, they're using iPads, trying to do the software, doing their investigations. This would allow them to tie into the CAD system as well to see the cause.
See, this is what I'm getting really concerned about. We're just expanding, expanding, expanding. Before long, we're going to have blue lights on the dag gum vehicles. I, I mean, there's got to be some limits here. There's got to be some limits. We now have $875,000 a year to operate this department. You can't, there's got to be some limits. You just cannot add everything. Yes, I'd like everybody to have a laptop and a cell phone and, but, but I, I just don't see the need of putting laptop terminals. Now, you're going to have to turn around and have Wi-Fi or have some access to the internet. Then there's a service contract on the, the laptop. You just keep adding and adding and adding. And I would just like us to kind of lower our expectations just a bit here.
On, on this one item, the laptops, this is something that I feel would, would help the officers, but it's not a necessity.
Thank you for that comment. So the first cut that I can think of, that we have an agreement for, where was that line item?
262.
And that was $8,400. While we're cutting.
Yes, sir.
Let me go all the way back up here to your overtime, where you were estimating $40,000 in overtime. I'd like to cut that in half to 20,000 on your overtime.
However, the 28 included all of the city of Goldsboro, and you no longer have the city of Goldsboro. Your workload is down.
But also that, that overtime for Goldsboro is, would be minimal, just for the simple fact that the only time you're getting overtime for it is after hours.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it reasonable that, I think, go back to maybe what someone that started said, anything that's picked up after hours from Goldsboro, they would be invoiced for?
I've got that on my list. To, to look at a study on, on doing a charge on after hours if you go into the city.
Let's go, let's go back to the overtime. You've got 40 in, you say right now you're at 28.
And you got, and you got, and you got 30 days to go? Yes, sir.
Could we cut it back to 30?
I'm good with that.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Another item I've seen that you guys can't control, and we've, we've been seeing it in every budget, is credit court handling fee.
Every department has that same.
We just need to figure out a way to get a third party to, to take care of all that, because this.
I mean, for the whole county, for the whole county. And that's, and that's beyond y'all's control. You don't have any control over that.
Can, can they charge a convenience fee?
We just need to go back and look at our.
Agreed, okay.
So we have that on the list.
Mr. Chairman, a question on 329, Other Communications, $7,700 in Other Communications.
And that's going to be your cell phones, your pager, and your iPad, the iPad you're using now.
All right. Are you providing cell phones to everyone?
Just the officers, myself, and rescue coordinator.
Well, who's getting the pagers?
The officers pass the pager. There's one pager that is passed between the officers when they go on call.
So you got a pager and a cell phone?
Yes, sir. We're dispatched by a pager.
What'd you just say?
We're dispatched by a pager.
Dispatched by a pager.
When the call comes into 911, they don't have a, they call them on the pager.
Oh, okay. All right. See, that made sense to you, but it didn't to me. So 911 is, uses the pager to page you to dispatch.
That frees him up to take other calls.
Okay.
I mean, all you've got to do is push the button.
Can we, can I offer some money up to you?
Please.
Can we go back to 321 telephone?
Yes.
Does it say 6586?
Do I know?
Does it say 6586?
It does.
You can cut that. We found out that that service was no longer needed.
Oh, let's cut that out.
So that's null and void, gone, it's been disconnected.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question. Anytime a man offers you some money, we'll end the conversation. Remember that, guys.
I don't have one other question. It was on training.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting ready to go to some sort of conference this year or something. I was rep for 27 to full valve. And that's 395. I mean, if it's a needed conference.
Yeah, that's true. Animal cruelty classes.
We're trying to get all the officers into additional cruelty classes, investigation classes.
Okay. I just wanted to know what.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I'd just like to pay this department a small compliment. When old people call looking for their cats and things like that, I appreciate the attention that you all give to that. Leo said thank you for not, not being him.
Yes, sir.
Did y'all, ladies, did y'all get those cuts? Mr. Bell?
I'm still trying to figure out how they're going to say we can only have a certain number of hours. And when you've got to go up on the Woodson County line or out in Salston and all that kind of stuff, you're burning up a lot of time going out for, on one call. So, I mean, they're going to have to have the freedom to go where the action is. But you, if you limit them too short, they're not going to be able to do the job.
Well, you know, you're talking about the overtime.
Yeah, anytime.
Well, I mean, you know, next year, in, in May, and you're over that 30,000? I mean, you're going to do a budget amendment. I mean, you, you know, this is, this is not, this is not carved in granite.
We're trying to limit overtime. I, I am seeing an explosion in all departments on overtime. And overtime is expensive to any budget, and it just seems like that is getting out of hand. It is literally getting out of hand on overtime. We have to limit overtime. Any business limits overtime. You do everything you can to limit overtime, because that's time and a half. But also, you've got all of the benefits associated with that time and a half. So it's just not the time and a half. It's, it really does hurt a budget.
And OES divisions, I've taught what all the division is in last staff meeting, and we are putting safe measures and policies in place to limit a lot of our overtime.
We have to, we have to. Now, what, if I may, before we let them go, don't want to beat up on you too much, because we already have today. I have great concerns how all of a sudden, an ambulance was surplus, moved over to animal control, outfitted, painted decals, and then I'm sitting here one day, after I saw it on Facebook, I see a budget amendment coming in in order to accomplish that. So it was kind of like one of these things that a budget amendment is supposed to come here to authorize you to do things, not after it's done to be brought here and said, by the way, we did this, we hope you will authorize it. So I hope that does not happen again.
No, I don't think it'll happen again, sir. I think that was taken care of on paper.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stay up here, Mel.
Thank you all for watching. It looks like we're not on your side sometimes, but, but we appreciate what y'all do.
Next was 8914325, and I don't have anything in my book. I'm missing that page.
Don't leave, Mr. Rogers. It's going to get more.
Janice, I don't have a 4325 page. I got the tab, but I don't have the pager. Am I supposed to have one? Okay. I got no way I can answer.
We don't have a 4325.
4325, 911 telephone?
Maybe it's back here in the very back.
Well, I got the tab, but I don't have the.
Oh, you don't have it.
No, I got, I got it.
Oh, okay.
911 system found. The tab is 914325. It's 4325.
She just wants to see if you paid attention. That's Zach Rice, she just wanted to make sure I was paying attention. Thank you for that, Ross.
Okay.
There he is.
Slight decrease in overtime.
Call volumes increased.
Are you answering these questions, Mel? I said, are, are you going to answer these? Oh, no. Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Explain to me straight time, overtime, holiday pay.
Okay. Straight time overtime, that is any, straight time overtime is any hours worked over your regularly scheduled shift. So we have a 48-hour work week and a 36-hour work week. So anything that you work over your 48 hours or your 36 hours is considered straight time overtime. So it's not time and a half, it's just your regularly scheduled hourly pay.
That's about as confusing as mud. But that said, from what I understand you just say, and that is, if you've got a 48-hour work week and you work overtime, you get straight time overtime.
Yes.
You don't get overtime time and a half, you get straight time. Is that correct?
That's right.
Well, at what point does it turn into overtime? Well, at what point does it turn into overtime?
Anything over 48 hours is overtime.
You just said no, that anything over 48 was straight time.
Time and a half, that's what you're saying. You mean time and a half.
Yeah, time and a half overtime.
All right, it doesn't turn into time and a half.
Well, you've got 122 is overtime. You've got 12202 is straight time.
Okay, so 122, one of them's fluctuating overtime.
Yes, so the way it works, and Tina, chime in if I say it wrong, everybody has a base pay. So this is your base pay, this is your 40 hours a week, that's your base pay, that's what you guarantee. Then your straight time overtime, that fluctuating overtime is already calculated in, this is what you're going to have, this is what you're going to get. That's part of your salary. So you've got a base salary, then you've got your straight time overtime, because everybody's going to work over 40. So that's already scheduled in. And then we've got unscheduled overtime, which is that when you work another shift. So if you have to come in and work another shift, it comes out of the unscheduled overtime. Then we've got extra help, and then overtime. So that straight time overtime you see is part of their salary.
Okay, I work at 911. You're going to give me a salary, $35,000 here. In that salary is included my shift of 48 hours one week, right?
Should be your base pay.
That's included in the amount that you're paying, my base pay.
Base pay.
Of that 48-hour work, work, week. The following week, I'm not working 48 hours, how many hours am I working?
36.
36 hours. Is this correct? And that's my base pay.
That's your base pay.
If I work beyond that, 48 hours or 36, then I would get straight time overtime.
Yes.
Is that correct? Now, what is, what would be my straight time overtime? Is that time and a half?
No.
Straight time.
It's whatever my hourly rate is.
It's $15 an hour, you get $15 an hour.
Well, when do I ever get overtime, time and a half?
You don't.
I never did.
We don't have time and a half.
Well, why have you got it on here then?
Time and a half?
Well, you've got overtime, you've got $89,000 worth of overtime, then you've got straight time of 61,000, then you've got a million dollars in, in wages.
So if you're part-time, if I'm correct here, if you're part-time, there's time and a half overtime. If you're part-time. But if you're full-time, you don't get time and a half. You get straight time overtime. Am I correct on that?
Part-time, anything over 40, if you work over 40 hours a week, when you're part-time, your employee gets time and a half.
Time and a half, that's for your part-time.
Why have we got part-time employees working 40 hours?
We don't.
You don't. But you may not, but I'm just saying that would be the time and a half over 40. But the overtime line item is for your part-time people, that does not work more than 1,000 hours a week. So you have to have a line item revealed to pay them out of that stuff. Just because it says overtime doesn't mean it's time and a half in that line item.
And the law still treats the, on the work week, that employee works 48 hours, the law still treats that eight hours over. They still treat it as, that's overtime, but it allows that it not get paid at time and a half. Time is time. Because the base under the fluctuating work week model, base covers time. So then, but the law still recognizes anything over 40 hours when they work on a seven-day work week as overtime.
So in other words, the way y'all got this working, I could be part-time, and get $15 an hour, whatever the rate is.
Whatever the rate is.
And work overtime, when would I get to overtime?
Tina, will you come to the microphone? Thank you. I can't hear you from the.
If I'm part-time, I'm not going to be at overtime. So a part-timer cannot be at overtime.
Part-timers are different than full-time employees. They don't receive the base, so the true fluctuating work week model does not apply to them. So any hour over 40 for a part-timer is paid at time and a half. I don't really think Daniel runs into that with his employee, with his part-time employees. But the overtime that you see under Daniel's budget, 122 is his fluctuating overtime. And that's that 48-hour week, that the eight hours of that 48-hour week that they work.
Now, wait, just a minute here. I was just told that the 48 hours is included in my base pay.
The time, the 40 hours, time is included. Time, overtime is time and a half, or pay rate and a half, 1.5. Your base covers the one.
We got a problem here.
So you have to settle the 1.5.
I'm telling you, we got a problem here. And this needs to be addressed, and we're not going to address it today. But it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be looked at strongly, because you're paying me twice. If you're paying me for my base, and it includes a 48-hour work week, and you're going to turn around and put me in for overtime, you're paying me twice. And it's wrong. It needs to be looked at. Thank you, I'm moving on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question along this line.
According to, according to the private sector Department of Labor, a part-time person is classified 30 hours a list, is that correct? Why, why, and if a person works over the 30 hours on a continual basis, they are considered full-time?
Right.
Right, you're exactly right, coming from the private sector. But there are specific North Carolina and federal Department of Labor standards that apply strictly to first responders, which includes dispatchers, EMS, law enforcement, because of a fluctuating schedule. And it's, it's convoluted, as Tina just tried to explain, but it is the law.
Well, I.
They're going by the law.
They, they, well, that's fine. But I also agree that the base pay, the base pay of a full-time worker, why, why wouldn't we set that base pay rather than, what, 48 hours and 36 hours? Why don't we set that at 40 hours, which will be straight time, that's their 40-hour week, then give them the straight time overtime, which will show up in the overtime line item? It, I think, I think Commissioner Daugherty may be correct. Are we not paying these people twice?
I won't.
It needs to be looked at.
It, it, it needs to be looked at.
We set this up the way she told us on the federal Department of Labor.
Every employee in EMS and dispatch has a base pay for 174 hours a month. Anything worked over their 40 hours a week, EMS and dispatch, 48 hours, 72 hours, is considered fluctuating overtime. Few years back, it was paid at Chinese overtime, is what folks called it. So when we had an issue with Ceridian, the pay rate was changed to their hourly rate, straight across the board. So anything, they get their base rate, their base salary, that can never be touched. That can never be messed with. But anything they work over 40 hours, they have to work their fluctuating work schedule to get paid. So anything over their 40 hours, whether it's a 48-hour week or 72-hour week, they get their straight time, let's just say $15 an hour. If that employee, full-time employee, comes back and works an extra shift, they get their base rate, their hourly rate, nothing changes. Because they are under the law for the full-time positions, full-time people. Now, your overtime line item is for your part-time people. That is, I don't want to work full-time, I just want to come in when I want to, if you need me. They come in and they work, they get paid an hourly rate. It may not, I mean, their, their rate may be $12 an hour, or $11.92, I don't, I'm not sure, and I don't know what Daniel's part-time rate is. So they get paid $11.92 an hour. If, for some reason, you've got people out sick, vacation, workers comp, whatever, and you need part-time folks, then these people can work. But if they work over 40 hours, that's when your time and a half comes in. But they're, we're trying to limit that, that they don't go over 40 hours. We've put things in place that, that they're not going to go over 40 hours, if it can be helped. Does that make sense, Dave?
Well, other than the fact that $90,000 a year, you've got budgeted for it going over, but you're saying you're limited. You're saying you're limiting the part-time from being that, but yet you're budgeting $90,000 a year for it.
We've just put things in place in the last few weeks, couple of weeks, three weeks.
Oh, in the last few weeks?
Yes, yes.
So evidently, you all have recognized there's an issue here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on. Payroll is too high, I'm telling you, it's too high. And it's not only that, would you, people are not recognizing is, as this payroll is higher, so do the benefits go. And it's an explosion almost, and it really kills the budget.
We, we have recognized it. I've talked with the county manager about it, and in the last couple of weeks, we have put in one new policy.
So are we, so are we eliminating the $90,000 in overtime?
Not all of it.
I want somebody in that phone if I call.
We still, we still have some tweaking we have to follow this, and, and.
But the goal is.
So before you come with the final numbers, will you maybe have some tweaking there? Thank you, thank you.
I just want to ask one question, now that you can get a chance. Is, is the overtime just for part-time people?
Time and a half is just for.
Time and a half is.
Not overtime.
With the overtime line.
And time and a half.
And so we don't have the same discussion of the next ones we go through, or y'all were doing the same thing on each one of your.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm just.
That goes across the board.
We're going through the same conversation again.
There is a difference.
In the overtime line item, not only are you paying your part-time people out of that line item, and they're only getting paid time and a half if they go over 40 hours, but you're also paying your full-time folks that works unscheduled. If they come in and work an extra shift, they're being paid out of that overtime line item, but they're not getting time and a half. That's right.
Now, I'll make one suggestion for us, who are maybe, maybe more visual. Give us an imaginary person on the piece of paper, and show all the different ways that a person could fit these categories. I think that would help.
We can do that.
All right, we'll have to put it on the notes.
And as I recall, and my memory ain't that good, but when we changed over to this system, I think Joe was still over there as the director, it saved us a significant amount of money.
It did.
I can't remember what the numbers were then, but.
I think the, it was.
You remember that, Wayne?
And I, even before, even before I come to Commissioner, I was involved with the, with the emergency side all my life. And I've heard this talked ever since I can remember. I mean, even before Mel, I mean, when, when Carl Ray was here, and Jerry Grimes was here, I mean, they, they always had an issue with, with.
Fluctuating overtime.
Fluctuating overtime. I mean, they, you know, it just, and that's the reason it was tagged, the Chinese overtime stuff. I mean, there's always been an issue, but y'all want to straighten it out for us.
Yes, and, and what you guys did back in 2013, really, I know it's hard to believe, but it simplified it tremendously. Because at that point in time, it was half-rate, and it got very confusing with half, it would half-rate, half-rate, half-rate. So I know it's hard to believe, but in 2013, you guys simplified it a whole lot to what it is now, compared to what it was.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm looking to see if I got any other questions.
You are having a tremendous decrease in 440.
Okay, so let me just, okay, so.
Oh, you're laughing, I need to break that, didn't you?
All right, so. What you're going to see is you're going to see some extreme decreases in some line items, but those decreases, you're going to see an increase in OES's budget. It'll wash out. What we've, in the direct county radio system, we had part of it in 911 budget, we had part of it in OES budget. It got very convoluted. I met with Allison, and we decided to move it all into one call center. So we have moved it out of 911 and put it into OES. So you're going to see a lot of decreases in OES, in 911. Just understand, you'll see those increases when we go to the OES side.
It will not affect any grants or funding from the state.
No, sir, no, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
Like, so you got about a half million dollar reduction over the last year. I was very excited when I first saw it.
And I explained to him what he was going to find.
That's why I'm laughing, I was like, Daniel was my new favorite best friend for about 30 seconds.
I was going to ask the board before we move on to the next section.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to move on. We don't beat them up enough.
You don't need a break, is what I'm asking.
You want to do unrestricted side, it's quick.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's the state side.
He can go back to work.
So that's 225.
225.
Yeah, 225.
That's down there at the bottom there. There it is.
Is it down?
This is the, this is the side that's the state funding that we get from the 911 board from Raleigh.
Well, let me find you.
It's down below.
Is it a blue?
No, it's down.
It's right behind the blue.
There it is, I see. It's bad when you're making yourself a note, and you can't understand what the heck you said. I don't understand the question. Oh, I do know it.
You say these are grants, Mel.
No, sir, this is, the surplus, the surplus monies, every month, everybody pays a 911 fee on your cell phone, on your regular phone. It goes into a fund with the state, and then that's divided up amongst the counties.
And that is my question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how much is generated on the 911 fees for all of the phones in Wayne County? How much do we generate? You know, it used to be we knew how much that was.
We don't, it goes straight to the board now.
So in other words, now they sequentially keep that information. Can you find out for us?
I will, we will see, we'll find out.
In other words, I truly believe that the residents of Wayne County are generating a tremendous amount of dollars, but it's not being used for them. It's going into a pot in Raleigh, and they're distributing it out, and it's not coming back to this county.
That's exactly how it is. As it goes there, then they have some formula that they use to distribute it each year to all of the counties.
Well, I really don't have a problem if the folks in Wake County are putting it in the pot, and they're sending it down here. But I do get upset if we're putting it in the pot and it's going to them.
Right.
Well, and, and unless it's changed to the record at 911 fund, doesn't like Wayne County.
He's retired.
He's retired.
Retired in April.
Well, I wish I'd known it, I'd have gone to that retirement.
Let's do find out how much we are generating.
But also, that is a fluctuating amount of particular fund, the fund balance that we have. So they don't, they want to suspend that money. So if we're not spending the money, then, then our appropriation goes there.
It's a double ledger source.
Another question, and you may not know this. Is this just on landlines, or does it include cell phones also?
It's all together now. You used to, remember, it was a 60-40 back 10 years ago, 60% wireless, 40% wireline, and they did away. The county used to get all the wireline, and they got all the wireless. And a few little years passed, they combined it, and everything went. Yes, sir.
Because there's less land, landlines now than there was 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, this, the 911 board is who we're asking for grant funding for the brick and mortar, for the OES 911 centers.
You know, they're a really nice board.
They're wonderful, we love them.
We're not going to study until afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think you may explain it, you know, your appropriation current is, you know, over 2 million, it's going down to 527. What was the, what was that reason again?
The radio system, we had, we had budgeted for the county radio system, some of it, and, and, now, you're talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the 225.
Which one?
How much did he?
What was the last, last story?
225, my question is, you know, 22 million, now, the recommended now is going down to 573.
There was some reductions. You'll find out that in, in 440, we had about $68,000 reduced out of there. And that was a reduction in UPS and recorder, a reduction in the past maintenance for the vendor that used to have the CAD system. So I know there's a big reduction there. We had a reduction in non-capital computers, should have been a reduction. We did a $14,000 reduction in 911 chairs. We're only allowed to buy those every two to three years. So in about two years, we'll put that $14,000 back in to buy 911 chairs. And we do that every couple of years, we're allowed.
Mr. Page, the biggest part of that that you're probably seeing.
Mr. Page, the biggest part of that that you're probably seeing is, if you look in this, this prior year, there was one point one million, and then three hundred some thousand for capital...
Right.
That you're not seeing. That is related to the nine-one-one center. Those are funds that were appropriated. If you recall, this was part of our issues with the nine-one-one board. We had moved one point five million for equipment for the nine-one-one center over to that capital project fund. They reversed their answer completely the next year, and told me that I need to move it back. So we had to move it back to that fund, which is what you're seeing there.
I remember that, ma'am.
And so, um, it's not going to, we'll just reappropriate it, um, in the next year. So, but we wouldn't budget it again. It'd just be carried over.
Thank you.
Will we take a break?
Well, that's what I wanted to do. Y'all ready to take a break?
No, no. If we're not going to take one, I'm going to take one.
Mail needs a break, too.
Thank you.
We're back in ten.
And moving into Mercy's Ursus, forty-three-thirty. Well, I thought you had left.
No, sir. I'm still here.
You don't sound very good.
Well, I didn't want to have this conversation, but I don't see any overtime in straight, overtime in straight back.
They took it out.
Go get that wedding, go get it.
Okay, we'll leave that alone for now.
Are we at six-twenty-two? What are we at?
Uh, one-ten, forty-three-thirty.
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 How many, how, how many are included, personnel included in one-twenty-one?
Should be four.
Four?
Four.
Well, then, my question is, why is one-eighty-six-zero-zero-one sixty-one thousand dollars for workers' compensation?
That's fire departments. That's the volunteer fire departments.
So there's more than four there?
Yes, sir.
That's all fire departments?
Close to nine-hundred.
Yeah, close to nine-hundred. That's all the fire departments.
All right. That answers that, then. And you got eighty-five hundred dollars for one-ninety-nine? When you had zero...
That, again, some of this was carried over from the nine-one-one budget. So that, um, that eighty-five, that would be, um, our FCC attorney, a part of the radio system. We've pulled him out. So that was a decrease of eighty-five hundred in the nine-one-one budget that was pulled over into the OES budget.
And how many vehicles are you talking about in two-fifty-one?
Three. Yeah. They got three in the spare.
Three in the what?
Spare.
What's a spare?
Spare vehicle.
Why would you have a spare vehicle?
So when one goes down.
See, you should have answered that, it's four. What?
All right, four. Let's go back. Four.
And we increased that because of anticipated gas increase.
And, and what we did, and what you see on, on our fuel lines, we called finance, asked them to give us the total mileage that we had used, we annualized it out, and then whatever we were told to budget per gallon, that's what we budgeted. And then we did the oil changes, anticipated oil changes on top of that with facilities.
Oil, oil change, you getting none of the fleet?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Which is double price.
I'll read it, go ahead.
But we get double the stuff, we get double the service back.
They said doubling the service.
Yeah, we get double the service back.
So they're getting double the price. Uh, we learned that yesterday.
Yeah. How much did Kendall pay you to say that?
Two-ninety-nine security supplies.
Yes, sir, that covers, and that should, I hope that went down, um, that covers, um, the badges, our proximity badges that everybody has. It covers camera replacement. There's a, there's ten thousand dollars in there for the jail camera and intercom maintenance, intercom maintenance. We looked at doing a, a maintenance agreement for the cameras in the jail about two years ago. It was about sixty thousand dollars a year. And so, uh, Mr. Wood at that time said, we're just going to put ten thousand in this line item, you take care of it. So we handle camera replacements, blade replacements, anything that happens at the courthouse in the camera system, jail cameras comes out of that line item.
Travis Mills and Lodge, that's gone up, up going somewhere this year?
That is part of, uh, on the radio system, we've got a, a conference, a radio conference we go to with our vendor, and it was in nine-one-one, and we pulled it over to...
Okay. What are you paying utilities of forty-five thousand dollars?
All the tower sites. That used to be in, um, nine-one-one, we pulled it over to OES. That's our tower sites for electricity, uh, for the generator, for fuel. Um, that keeps our tower sites up and running.
You poured, uh, three-fifty-two over two, because it was sixteen hundred dollars, went to thirty-five thousand.
Uh, that was moved from nine-one-one center. That was antenna replacement, non-contract radio repairs, non-contract radio system equipment repairs, um, and then signs. We've got two DOT signs that we got through a grant, and we have to replace those batteries every couple of years, and this is a year that we have to replace the batteries on.
On four forty?
On four forty, um, again, a lot of that was moved from nine-one-one. Uh, we moved the radio service agreement, the fire EMS paging service agreement, jail radio service agreement. A lot of those came from the nine-one-one side.
Were there increases in any of those line item?
Yes. Well, the radio service agreement, that's, we've done it for half a year from January to June, and now it's showing the full fiscal year from July to June for our radio service agreement, um, at a hundred-four-seven-thirty-five.
First, did you already explain the, the one-ninety-nine, that the professional service eighty-five?
The eighty-five hundred, that's our FCC attorney.
Okay, okay. I'm looking, and I was listening.
Can I offer you some more money?
Sure.
So, and I've got to, uh, I've really got to give hats off to the fire marshal. He's the one that really took this on.
To who? My best friend.
For about two months now, we have been testing, uh, the paging system for EMS. Now, we've got digital pagers, uh, and we've been trying to get them to run through our digital radio system. Last Friday, was it Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday. He come to me to go eyes, and they got it going. It's working now. The only thing we had to do was buy four more pagers, and then pay to have, the current pagers moved to phase two. It cost us about four thousand dollars. So, on that, uh, fire EMS paging service agreement for twenty-five thousand, we won't be using the EMS transmitter, so you cut that to twelve thousand five hundred.
Which line item, what's that?
Four forty.
Four forty.
You'll see twenty-five thousand for fire EMS paging service agreement?
No, we got four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars there.
No, 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 no. Cut twelve thousand five hundred off him.
Off with the full seventy-nine?
Yes. Twelve thousand five hundred. That, that four thousand we spent yesterday will cut that twelve-five reoccurring every year.
Was that a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars?
No, that was one too many zeros.
Thank you.
We're at one-ten, forty-three-hundred, four forty, is that where we at?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, forty-three-thirty, four forty.
And the full expenditure is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars?
Five sixty-five, and you dropped twelve thousand.
Minus twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Five hundred.
Heck, you thought you were going to get the dag gum Jim down your stomach.
I said, there's the... I think, Joe, you might be worthy to expound on that. The reason we look so tight is that for every left hand, there's a right hand that needs something, and I, so when Joe is, being Joe, he's not just...
Hush.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on, on this?
No, we squeezed that one. We squeezed that one.
Break the net on that. Well, we, we saved another twelve thousand five hundred dollars there.
Lot better than we were doing yesterday, now, I can say that.
Definitely yesterday.
See, it was my preference this morning when I told them that we were going to be looking at their monies.
I was going to say...
Where's six-thirty be?
Back in the back.
Down at the bottom. We're going to add to this.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a few statements. In good spirit, I have some real issues here. And here's why I have issues, and that is that Wayne Net was the bright spot. Wayne Net was generating dollars to offset some of the expenses over in EMS. And then came along Jazz that folded, and we decided to expand Net to absorb that. And there, from the growing pains, I assume of that, Net turned from an asset to a liability. And here's why I say that. In this budget, we are transferring seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from one-ten general fund to pay to, for the operations of Wayne Net. So that means that, the way I read it, that's three-quarter of a million dollars that we lost. But it wasn't only the three-quarter of a million dollars, because you guys were making about a million dollars a year. So it's a one-point-seven-five million dollar swing, and the only thing I see that we did differently was we brought in and expanded Net to accommodate Jazz. We have got to get this under control. We got to find out what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, and we've got to correct the, the, the direction here and turn it to a positive. And I will quit my editorialization. Thank you.
Okay. The year that we took on Jazz is the year that the federal government changed its rules. That is, I've talked to you before about the prior authorizations. Anybody that we transport three times a week or more, which is mainly dialysis patients, or once a week for three weeks straight, which could be your wound care patients, they are considered repetitive patients. If you have a repetitive transport, you have to have prior authorization. You cannot send in prior authorization until the transport starts. You can't have a PCS form, physician certified statement form filled out for Medicare, any, any more than forty-eight hours before the trip starts, and not the day after. It has to be signed between two days and the day of the transport. So we get the medical records, we start two weeks prior to this transport, if it's a, um, an established patient. If it's a new patient, it's hard to get it, things going, um, ahead of time. Two weeks prior to the, before the PCS form runs out on the established patient, we start getting medical records, you know, calling the hospital, calling the facility, calling the doctor's office, whatever we need, to get all the medical records. The day that we can get the PCS form signed for this patient, we go online and fill out a Medicare form for a prior authorization. It takes Medicare ten to twenty-one days, business days, to get us an answer back. If we get it back, and they have affirmed it, we're in the clear. If they have not, then I have to stop all transport, because nobody's going to pay. We have to bill the patient. So that's where part of the, the issue is.
Because the patients are not paying.
The patients that we carry...
Can't pay.
Can't pay.
Well, your explanation has really opened up Pandora's box.
And I understand that.
Because this county's going to have to make a decision. If, in fact, that is the requirement, then we need to be finding another Jazz, and we need to get out of the, the non-emergency transport business, because you're adding cost to, to the county taxpayer. Whereas before, it was an asset, it's now turned into a liability. And that happens a lot in government. But my point being is that we can't afford to lose three-quarters of a million, to a million dollars a year to subsidize non-emergency transport. It's already a big strain on us just to provide EMS service. We can't provide the other as well.
Can I add something else?
It's even worse.
Oh, this is good.
Oh, this is good. I would like to hear some good ones.
Okay. Our billing company sent me last week, the, our projected revenues for Wayne Net for the ambulance trip only, ambulance trips only, our projected revenue was one million one hundred and fifty thousand and forty-one dollars for this, this budget year.
Let me hear that number again. One million?
One million, one hundred and fifty thousand and forty-one dollars.
Okay.
As of April the thirtieth, per our EMS billing company, Wayne Net has collected one million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay.
In the wheelchair collection, we were, projected revenue this year was twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. We have collected forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. I do not have what our collection is as of today on the DOAs, or what, we have a swipe card, what we collect for the county. I don't, I did not get that.
Ten thousand right now?
For DOAs. It's a little over ten thousand dollars this, this year for the DOAs.
However, as good as that is, and of course, your revenues are more than what you budgeted, you're looking at one-point-seven million dollars in revenues, and two-point-eight million dollars in expenses.
And I don't, and I don't know, I don't know if this has anything to do with it, I'm not sure, but I know that we are being separated from EMS. We have been with EMS the last couple of years, budget-wise, and as of July the first, we're being separated.
Yes.
So does that have anything to do with having to transfer in money?
So it'll be a little bit easier to see that, because we have spoken to our auditor about the fund balance and how to separate that out. But it will be a little bit easier to see that come June thirty, because when she does our, our audit, as it is with you combined, then she'll turn around after all the accruals are done and separate everything out. And then that'll give you a good indication over the next several months of what the two departments are doing individually.
And as more aware, we've had this conversation, is that it really, they are two separate...
They are.
...uh, different operations, you know, one's just, you know, not emergency transport, and, and it's not fair to either department to co-mingle, so they really need to stand on their own about...
Wayne Net's almost an enterprise fund, really.
Yes.
Um, it is not a mandated service, whereas EMS is.
That is correct.
So as such, whether we like this or not, if it's not mandated, it needs to stand on its own, and if it can't, then a decision's got to be made. Well, you continue with the service. We've got, we've, they've got to be separated long...
We've got, they've gotten to be separated long enough for us to find out though, because, I mean, you know.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, here's five columns that's got zeros in it. I mean, a lot of these figures, we trust in y'all that they're as close as you can get. But you don't have any history to go back on.
And one of the things I think we as a board and a community have to decide, is this a service? Is there somebody that would step up to the plate? Because this is definitely a needed service within our community.
Oh, yeah, I've seen Friendly running around all over eastern North Carolina.
And I will say this. When we took on those employees from Jazz, we weeded out what Wayne County did not need. But we still have employees that came over from Jazz and they have turned out to be good employees. And they have made the statement that they would never go back to work for a private sector like that again. Because the way that we do things and the way that our patients are treated and what we expect as a county from these people. And the calls that I get from patients and their families and the letters that we get, you know, commending my staff for what they're doing. I'm not Wayne Net. I'm the girl or the lady behind the scenes with the budget and doing that. My staff is Wayne Net and they do an excellent job. And I'm not sitting here trying to save Wayne Net. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Daughtry. But I also, that is my passion.
Well, I know.
And I'm not, I don't mean to get upset. But when you get a call from a family member that says, you know what, we were treated with respect where in the past we have not been. That makes a difference. When you've got home folks doing the job, that's what makes it all about.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we serving people outside of Wayne County?
We, our trips begin or end in Wayne County. We do have contracts with Kitty Askins. We have, we go as far as Fayetteville to the coast and pick up somebody that is in hospice and bring them to Kitty Askins.
But it's still, when you say it begins or ends in Wayne County, we're serving Wayne County folk.
Oh, yes.
I was just wondering if, because Jazz, you'd be Johnson, that was the Johnson County.
They're in 17 counties.
Okay, but I was just wondering if we were out in the other counties, serving other county, other residents. And the reason I said that was, if we're, if we're losing money, I would want them other counties to pick up the share of the loss because we're doing something for a region versus just us. But if.
No, sir. If we go to Lenore County and pick up somebody, they have to have a doctor's appointment here in Wayne County. Yes, sir. That's the only way we would go out of county. Or like I said, with Kitty Askins, when we go to Fayetteville or wherever and pick up somebody and bring them here to Kitty.
But one of the key things that I think we're talking about now is that you, this is, and somebody used that word. This is a service to our citizens that deserve a service.
That's right.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
That brings up another question. What do Lenore County, Johnson County, some of our other counties around us, what do they do for these services?
They have gone out and hired other services from other counties. And I think out of state, there was a couple coming in from Virginia and coming in and doing their transports.
So are we the only ones so far that's handling on the county level that you're aware of?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me ask. Mr. Mayor's question. To be able to get into the black, maybe we couldn't do that if we offered our services to the counties around us who are getting other, I mean, is there profit? Is there opportunity for some?
Hey, we're already losing them anyway.
No, I'm good.
You sound like the hospital. They're losing money on this and they can buy more.
I'm not ready to give up on Wayne Net because I remember what we said at the beginning. And it's supposed to be providing a service for the people of Wayne County. And, you know, and I know this may bring some heartburn to some of us because we look at the dollar and cents. But sometimes when you're gonna do things as a government for your citizens, you may not make the dollars that you wanted to make. But we are providing a service to a needed group of people out there. And I think we need to try everything within our powers to make it work. You know, I mean, some other.
Well, let me say this.
Okay.
I'm not trying to at all eliminate Wayne Net today. What I'm trying to say is, we've got a revenue problem. We've got an expense problem. And we've got to find some way, over the next year, to adjust this to where we are near or at a break-even. We can't continue to have hemorrhaging that's going on.
I understand. I understand completely what you're saying. I really do.
I mean, it happened over the last couple of years. We didn't know last year because it was combined. This was the first year that we've broken it back out. Hopefully, our projections are wrong.
Well, I would just say, the other thing is, it does make it, I mean, they were profitable before they were combined. So I think it's possible that they have been at least holding their own since they've been combined. But it's very difficult to tell that because they've been combined with EMS.
Correct.
So it's, I think, once they're separated back out, that next six months, six to nine months, you're gonna, you know.
Well, now, Net, let me ask you a question. Have you let EMS put a little, some expenditures on your side of the column? No.
No, but we.
You're gonna have to make sure it's kept separate.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no. No, definitely.
Give a proper gauge.
Oh, yes. No, we'll definitely keep it separate. No, sir.
We also got to keep in mind now, she is the backup to nine-one-four EMS too now. I mean, and those, we want to write that off. I mean, I mean, they're, because I mean, I, you know, I got a radio and every once in a while EMS will get a call and there'll be a Wayne Net truck that's out of, not out of service, but doesn't have anybody on it. It's right on top of that call. And I've heard them calling and say, do you want us to take that call for you? And then, you know, it's costing your department, but then again, it's.
It costs our department and EMS gets the money for it.
Right.
They get to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, because I called emergency for my wife when she had to go to the hospital. Wayne Net showed up, so.
John made my point. John, you're reading my mind. I just wanted for public consumption, just to share with the public the range of folk that you transport. Because then the public can maybe, it becomes more identifiable to them who you're really helping. Oh, that was my uncle that she, you know, my point.
Right.
Mayor, you want to discuss what you just asked about?
Absolutely. So what you have here, and we'll keep this for EMS as well. This is our trip costs. And what we did, we went with Lenore, Johnston, Pitt, Wilson, and Craven County on what they're charging. And again, what you see in the red on Wayne County, that is what's in the current proposed budget on the fee schedule to go up. So if you look at, on Wayne Net, their ALS, non-emergency transport is 335.37. It would go up to 392.70 if the budget is approved with that fee schedule. So that's what you'll see on their BLS, their basic life support, non-emergency would be 327. One new item that we've put on that we've never really charged for, and it doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen, is the specialty care transport. And we're gonna be charging that at $1,063.
A question to follow up on this is, these are the rates that are currently charged by other counties. They're facing the same shortages that we are. Are they going up too, or do you have?
It, really, all these are set, a lot of this is Medicare rates. You can't, you can't up, but every so often, and it's only, I think the most you can do is 150%.
150%.
So we have to rely on our billing company to let us know what that is. And here, I think we went with just as much as we could, I think, with the max allowed. The one thing I didn't like, I wanted to go up on the loaded mileage because we're kind of low on that at 945. But somehow Medicare and the state sees us as an urban county and not a rural county. So we have to do the urban rate.
Why is that?
It's, my understanding is, and when I asked, I said, North Carolina Department of Transportation sets those.
Who sets the round trip for a wheelchair at $50?
Y'all.
Who?
Commissioners.
Well, let me get this straight. I'm in a wheelchair and I am at a home in Mount Olive and I call you and say, I need a trip to go to Walmart. You come pick me up.
No, 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 no. Doctors offices.
All right.
Doctors of course. No, no, I'm not gonna take you to Walmart.
I gotta go to an iPhone.
Okay.
It's only $50 to come pick me up and take me and bring me back. Well, don't you think that's kind of cheap?
And let me say this. There is another wheel, any wheelchair company can come in the county. We don't have a, because there's insurance that can cover that. Medicare doesn't have rules on that. So any wheelchair company can come in the county and transport within our county. I have talked to another company and they are lower than us.
They're cheaper than $50.
How can they stay in business?
And they're not made to, the people are not made to pay upfront. If we get a citizen to call and say, we need to go to the doctor's office, we require them to pay us upfront through a credit card or debit card before we go get them.
Well, wait a minute. They have got a van that's wheelchair accessible. You've got basically a full-fledged ambulance.
No, sir, we've got three wheelchair vans.
So you've got vans. So you're gonna send a van out.
Yes. Yes. I'm not gonna pick anybody up on a wheelchair on a stretcher, on an ambulance.
Hell, I don't know where your solution's gonna be.
Get those wheelchair ambulances instead of.
Right.
You buy two of them for what you can, one ambulance is a problem.
Let's go back to the, we just sent you on that one.
Okay.
So a patient calls you and they need you to come and get them. And I, maybe I missed, does Medicare or Medicaid pay for that? So the person is having to pay, that individual is having to pay that?
Yes, sir.
$50?
$50.
Out of their pocket?
Out of their pocket.
Thank you, ma'am, for it not being no higher. I'm just.
But why would you even do that when you call Gateway and they'll come to your home, anywhere in the county, wheelchair accessible?
That's what I was gonna ask you, man.
Well, see, there must be some misinformation, I mean, so the public needs to have more information about.
And I think that charges, what, $5?
But that may be because their Medicaid reimburs as well.
That's where the difference.
Who is?
What's?
Gateway.
I don't think Gateway's reimbursed for.
They're, they're, through DSS and Social Services, there's a lot of vouchers that Gateway does for Medicaid patients.
I would like to wrap this thing up.
We need to put, have a program on our station about the best place for our citizens to call. Because now, if you're talking about this $50 coming out of someone's pocket and they can get a better transportation through Gateway than they can through this one, we need to be letting citizens know where you can save your bucks at now. Because people out there, they don't have no extra money. I mean, let's get them the good but the cheapest.
We need, we need to wrap this up.
That's what I, we need to give them some time to give us some good figures.
I just have one addition.
Okay.
Commissioner Daughtry, you're on the Gateway Board, right?
Yeah.
And I was on it last year. Do you know of any instances how active the Gateway Board is on wheelchair patients? Do they, do you know if they're?
They're wheelchair accessible. They just gotta, they just have to call and.
They have some, but what I'm wondering is, is that, you know, are they active? Is Gateway active in using the wheelchair vans for, in other words, have y'all run across?
I'll check into it and find it.
Yeah, have y'all run into that? Do you see where?
We've run into instances where we've been contacted that Gateway couldn't get to them quick enough.
Well, you do have to have a two-hour, you have to schedule the day before and there's gotta be a two-hour. So if they want to pay the $50, I suppose they would call you.
Now, we require that too because, believe it or not, I mean, we do a lot of wheelchair transports also for the facilities that we have contracts with and from the hospital.
Mr. Chairman, let me.
They get paid for that.
Yes, sir.
Have Gateway to come up and do a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, let me end on a, kind of a so-so note. I would ask that we withhold the $193,000 of improvements of buying new ambulances.
We were gonna offer that up.
We were gonna offer that up.
You were about to offer that. Well, let me let you offer it then.
Not the moment.
Then I won't, I won't be the bad guy.
If it's all right with the board, we'd like to hold off on the purchase in CIP on the $193,000.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wrapping this on up, then we'll move.
Where's that at?
We're gonna move to.
That's $193,000.
Thank you, Net, and we'll move on to EMS. Because I'm sure our food's probably back there and I don't got tickets.
Do I need to sit back here and wait for?
He can come after lunch.
Yeah, we can, we can do this.
Well, oh, that'd be great.
Carol's, there's food over here.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, give you a chance.
It's great, he's barbecue. You don't wait for that.
And we can call David and maybe Tammy.
30 minutes.
Tell them about 30 minutes later. Okay. So we are recessed again. We're gonna have lunch. See y'all after lunch. We back. Come on, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
You know y'all are next in line.
Man, we got five pages to work here with.
This must be the big one.
I mean, I know it's down from last year's preparation, but the transfer of 110 is still pretty significant.
Yes, sir.
622.
622, I'm right at it.
I'm gonna make a statement here, just to kind of put things in perspective. Does, we all remember when we had volunteers that provided this service? Do we remember that? And that was, how many years ago?
16.
16 years ago.
16 years ago.
16 years ago, this basically was not a department. And this department today is $8.6 million, which represents 10 cents of our property tax. Now, really, when you put things in perspective like that, it kind of gives you an all. This department is costing the county $8.6 million a year. I mean, that's, that's pretty substantial.
Mayor, tell them how the federal government almost mandated that we go to this system back in the day.
Well, I understand all that. But the point is, it's a, one of our biggest departments.
Yes, sir.
16 years ago.
15 or 16? 2002 was the legislation that put it under there.
And I was, I'm just backing back. And I think this is to give a shout-out to the volunteers. I, I, part of, part of my reasoning, personal reasoning, with staying in Wayne County and moving down into Mount Olive, was that the level of of service that you got from the volunteers was, that was, I'll be honest with you, that was a big factor. That was a big factor in decision-making about where you live and that part of it. The volunteerism and those guys that, I can just picture some of the people that, I'll give them a shout-out, Schroeder, who does work still with the county. I distinctly remember him being a young patrolman. And, I mean, he was at every thing that happened in Mount Olive.
Yes, sir.
So although he was a, he was a patrolman, he was also part of that rescue.
Yes, sir.
Anyway. That was eight million dollars ago.
Mr. Chairman, a few questions.
Why is it that Medicaid is only so far as of this budget, I'm 69? Why is it that Medicaid is only so far as of this budget, $69,000 out of an estimated $700,000?
We have to turn that forward finance.
Ladies, are y'all answering that?
What's the number?
Uh, I'm sorry, 420, under revenue. In other words, actually, as of this time, it was only $69,000, but we had estimated $700,000.
That's our cost of, right. No, we still haven't received it. No, that's the one that's like, we have the same issue with the Health Department, they retain like 10% and then to, like for auditing purposes, and then eventually you'll get your settlement and then when they audit, they'll release or you pay back from 10%. But it's only paid out like once a year and a lot of times they're behind.
Let me get this straight. We provide the service all year, we bill them, but they only pay you once a year?
Well, I think this is separate than that.
That's separate from the billing?
Yes.
This is a, would you call it a cost settlement?
EMS Medicaid cost settlement, it's done once a year. You get dollars from that.
It's the same thing we talk about on the Health Department, it's more substantial usually, I think, on the Health Department.
But it should be around $700,000. It should come in here shortly, I assume.
Right. I can look and see where that might be.
I think it was in June, yeah, probably.
Are the user fees that you have recommended here, do they reflect your cost sheet that you sent, that you gave to us a while ago?
Yeah, just the, yes. What I gave you for the EMS side. And just remember, the red is what we've-
The new.
And the fee scheduled for this upcoming budget.
I have a question.
I don't see any figures down for Bosco Beach.
I agree. Does Bosco Beach supposed to pay us some dollars?
If they use the services, what we've agreed to and what we've done is, if they do a special use permit on something, I think there's a concert coming up, they'll use, they pay the county for the truck, to use the truck, and then they pay the employee direct. That's how we've got it set up. And now, we use FEMA reimbursement on that. FEMA reimbursement rates is what we use.
Oh, right.
For an ambulance, it's 47.50. No, 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 we use the FEMA rates so that it was across the board, there was no question. If we use the same rates FEMA does, I mean, that's what we do, so.
If they have an event down there, do you automatically send a truck?
They fill out a special use permit.
But only in special use permit?
Right.
That's 40-something per hour, or?
Yes, it's per hour.
Per hour, okay.
But they don't, they pay that to the county. Whatever that bill is, they pay to the county. They pay the medics separate, they'll pay them, that does not come out of payroll for the county. That's how George Wood set it up.
Are they paying us?
I don't see that, I don't see that we've ever billed.
I don't think we've had, I don't think we've had a special use.
We've not been requested.
I know there's, um-
Were you getting calls out there?
Oh, no, I mean, when we get emergency calls, we don't charge them to run, to take calls out there. This is on a standby basis.
Well, they, we send an ambulance out there dedicated to Bosco.
Okay.
And we've not had that request. We recently had a race, but they paid the county, they did not pay the county.
I don't know about that.
No, they did not pay the county. No, they want no special use, so they did not.
I think you need to look into that, because if they in fact are having events that require us to provide an ambulance on site, then they should reimburse the county for that.
Absolutely, and they're supposed to reimburse at the FEMA rate, 47 and some change.
But you're telling me that we don't get any money? And I know they've had events.
I don't know of anything we've done through a special use that we've had to put an ambulance-
Well, tell them they gotta get a special use permit every weekend. There you go.
The reason I ask that, because, you know, there's been a lot of incidents, there've been deaths and everything out there, you know, and, uh, I'm not picking on them, but, you know, that's a serious business out there.
I think the problem we've ran into, and I hate to keep saying George Wood, but him and I talked about it, in the special use permit, in the exceptions, it states that if it is a, I can't remember exactly how it states it, but if they're having an event that that property is made for and can house the people, they're exempt. So, that's what they look at. So, if they have like the Mud Bash, which is a bunch of four-wheelers going out there, that venue is set up for that venue and they've got the room, so it's exempt from the special. That's, that was how George Wood and I looked at it.
I thought that there was a, based upon the number of expected participants.
It is, until you get to the exceptions part. And then when you get to the exceptions part, it says, "If you meet one of these exceptions, you don't have to do the special use permit." And that's what we found out is, it states that if the venue is made for what they're doing.
Will you look into that and see where it can be more equitable to the county?
Sure, yes, sir.
They did.
One final question on that. Did we write the rules on that? Or who wrote?
We evidently approved.
We did.
All right. County off the beaten path to, uh, all the costs that Marmac has out there. Are they getting any compensation for that?
I don't know, I wouldn't think so.
But you build a patient that you pick up?
Yes, now, we, when we pick a patient up, of course, the user fees, we build a patient.
Well, Marmac can't do that, though.
No, Marmac cannot do that. So, I would imagine they're not getting any compensation. It is just another fire call or a first responder call.
They did, they used to get some when Jack Bennett was there. I don't know about the new people.
I don't know. I can check.
I see you got a line item here, 991, earnings appropriated. Have we exhausted all those funds? I just had to ask.
Well, I started last year that we were not able to use any of their fund balance any longer, so we've just had to deal with our transfers in place.
Well, I already beat that horse to death just about in regards to wages and salaries and overtimes and straight time and everything else, but that also is gonna be looked at.
Yes, sir.
Okay. 19001, professional services EMS management.
Yes, sir.
$184,000.
Yes, it should've went down $85,000.
That's our bill click.
That's EMS.
That's our EMS billing service.
Our billing service?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. How long we got on that contract?
Uh, June 30.
I have a question.
Yes. Back to, uh, salaries and wages, longevity. The longevity is for the employees that were grandfathered and the longevity. We stopped the longevity pay how many years ago?
I want to say 2009 timeframe.
Okay, but the longevity pay here is for those that were already in the system.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh. 401K retirement, 5% law.
Should be only $1, because that was put in there by mistake. Should only be $1 in there, because I think they said they couldn't take it out, so they just put a dollar in there.
You couldn't take it out? Really?
Give her a dollar.
Delete. You ain't got no delete button.
Here, I got a dollar.
Oh, gosh. Oh, my God.
Gotta get my business sneakers.
Now, Steve, you really missed the photo of the day. Him handing over a dollar.
We got it on camera, I'm sure.
You got other medical supplies, you got medical supplies and other medical supplies. So, let me see where I see. No, I'm sorry, those are program supplies, you got uniforms.
Give us a number, Jim.
Drugs. Uh, 239, top of the page. 340 grand. What in the world, medical supplies, are you spending $340,000?
And that should've come down.
That came down $30,800.
We annualized it out. So, we actually dropped that line by $30,800.
How were you able to bring it down that amount?
Med- well, we brought it down by annualizing. So, we looked at what we had spent up to April and then we divided eight, multiplied by 12, and that gave us what we are assuming is going to be.
Have we ever been able to piggyback with the hospital over our drug supplies?
No, sir.
They will not allow us to do that?
No, sir, because we just recently tried to piggyback also with the sheets with the hospital and they wouldn't allow us to piggyback with them on the sheets.
So, let me make sure I'm understanding, they can buy these supplies a whole lot less than we can and we're not able to piggyback with the hospital? Well, Mr. Board Member, you need to get that resolved.
Yeah, I hear you. The more UNC gets involved, the less contact.
And that's what we found out with the Lenins.
Wouldn't you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
At one time in the past, we could, McKesson was their supplier, we could piggyback and buy their, some of their rates through McKesson, but that I do not think since now it's UNC, we're able to do that anymore.
But I will, I will talk, we'll talk about it.
Well, let me ask you this question a different way. I'm sure there's a EMS organization in North Carolina. Have they thought about possibly getting together and creating a buyers group? We need to bring these costs-
That's gonna be a question, I'll have to research that one.
Well, I mean, if we can't-
Fire departments have tried, but it don't work.
It don't work.
They just-
Because fire departments try to do that with a lot of equipment, doing turnout gear, doing a lot of things, that it always fell through.
But it's just, oughta be some way you can bring down these drug costs, because if you're out here on your own buying them, you ain't got much bargaining position, but if you'll band together and have a buyers group, you can really negotiate some good deals.
I might, could explain a little bit of the costs, especially within the last couple of years, we've had a big drug shortage in the country. And so, of course, whenever you have any type of shortage, prices go up. And we, currently, we have two or three drugs we can't even get that's on the formulary, which is our protocols. And we just can't get them. So, whenever they come back, we know that the prices on them will increase.
Hospital is having the same issue, yes, sir.
Well, if we're having this problem here, Craig, I'm sure other counties are, so maybe we'll reach out to North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, maybe they can help us out on that.
You call that supply and demand.
Would you consider that, supply and demand in the same realm as fuel oil?
Yes, sir. Now, one thing we have done very recently, we've had, we have purchased, it's a snack vending machine is what it looks like, but it's labeled as a medical vending machine. And we have placed it at the hospital and we have pulled back a lot of stock that one time we were keeping at the stations. So, now the trucks have to restock when they go to the hospital. So, now we have cut back on that supply. And we're hoping to really show the difference next budget year, when we can have a full year of using this machine.
Because this machine, they have to log in to get the medications. So, it's more of a, it's gonna be more of an inventory control also.
262, non-capital computer skyrocketed.
Okay, so, I did want to talk to you about this line item. This line item reflected, remember, EMS Station 10 opening, I got you in a truck, you looked at how they can see the dispatch on the computer and go into the map.
Wouldn't let me drive it, though.
If you want to drive, you can see me.
You do not want me driving.
We just gotta make sure no one else got you under insurance, we'll do it. That was the cover for those computers, for the EMS trucks. So, there's some-
We currently have 10 ambulances on the road today. We have three QRVs on the road.
So, it was 18 tough books, 13 tablets, but what we talked about is, because of some of the uncertainties that's going on right now, we can table that. We can, we can table that cost, because of some uncertainties that are going on.
That's tied into our CAD system.
That's the CAD system.
CAD and our other software systems.
Which number is that?
262. Recommend that we kinda hold off on it or not? Mel and I had this conversation about five minutes before.
Yes.
We got, came back in here and I, I think we do need this eventually, but since we're kinda up in the air, it may be something we can delay at this time.
We can delay, come back at another time. Is that it now, 2009? 92, 525.
Physical year or this year? Coming back?
We, we don't know at this point with uncertainty on some of the-
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Software.
All right. From my understanding, though, the CAD system works great.
It does.
But if we had to-
That's the end of that conversation?
That's it.
Enough said. Okay, so, are we removing that?
I'd say for now. Maybe we have to come back.
We'd come back, yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. $92,525.
92?
Yes, $92,525. We still have, um-
Yeah, okay, you still have some things.
Yes, sir.
All right. I gotta hear this one. Rental of the building, $31,600. Uh, that is 412.
412.
Now, most of the rentals was for the Maxwell Center. And I'm hoping you're not gonna have that many events out there.
Now, this is where we've currently got our EMS, EMS trucks at. So, you've got Rosewood Fire Department, which is EMS Station 2, we pay rent. Grantham Rescue, that's where we've got Station 3, we pay rent there. Airway Volunteer Fire Department, we've got EMS Station there. We're trying to do that one for eight months, because that's where the new Seven Springs Station will come in and we won't have that lease payment. Belfast Fire Department, same way, we're doing eight months of lease there. Soon as we get the new station, we can move them.
Good enough. So, it's buildings?
Yes, sir.
How about the cap outlay on vehicles?
Brian and I spoke about that earlier yesterday and today and with, with how the budget's looking, we're offering to cut that out of the budget for this year.
What number are y'all on? I was busy.
540.
540.
And Brian said he would make it work, would-
Oh, make it work.
Take that out.
Yes, sir. That was 193 plus 97.
You know how many clients, we do need to call them people back we had yesterday. None of them offered to take nothing out.
We just extended the day, right? I love it. And that's, uh, 540.
Yes, sir.
Well, we met our goal, so I'm through, Mr. Chairman. We got David, though, here.
Yeah. He got plenty of money. Just load it on, spin them mobile billboards.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that they reconsider on the ambulances and let's put one ambulance back in there. What do you think?
So, can-
I think we need to have one ambulance in there.
We can still save you some money.
We're gonna get backed up if we, if we start skipping completely. I mean, at some point, instead of needing two, you're gonna need four.
So, what we can do, the other thing that Brian and I did, we contacted our vendor and we told him we wanted minimum, minimum on the new state standards. We did not want to pay for any frills or thrills, we wanted the minimum that it would take. So, what we'll do, it was 197 and some change. We can drop that down to 155, 136.
Well, let me ask you this, have we ever done much remounting?
We have, but it just takes, in the past, the last one we had remounted took us eight to 10 months to get it back, once we did it. We were into the next budget year, I believe, Tina, when we received it.
Remounting's an option, what is remounting, probably 70?
75, I think is what our last one, three years ago, was.
Do we have some good trucks?
I can find one to remount.
I know years ago, we tried to remounts and really, when they got into the bodies we're in.
I know, I know, years ago, we tried to remounts, and, and really, when they got into the, the bodies were in, we didn't have a clue that there was anything wrong with them, but they had replaced the floor and all of them, and jacked the door.
Almost to the same amount as a new truck. But you're committed at that point in time when you do that. That's just, we've had good luck, and we've had bad luck.
I say just do the one they're talking about.
Well, but, but you're talking about 155 for two?
One ambulance.
One. The 197 was for one ambulance?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And you've already said put it back.
Are you ready to re, rethink it? We're ready to back this back out, go back to, we won't do anything right now, and Brian feels like he can make it work.
200 grand for an ambulance?
Yes, sir.
And you charging $50 to go and pick up, go pick up somebody?
No, that's, that's on a van, that's not on that van. That's a different vehicle. That's, that's a totally different vehicle.
Oh, my, my, my.
If the board, if you'll give us time to go back, let him look at the fleet and let us see what we.
And I'll get him to come and look and pick one or two of the best ambulances out.
Remount, and then you can come back for that, when we finalize.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and do that first next week.
You already said you'll put it back.
Well, I couldn't understand when you said put one of the two in.
Well, I thought it was two. I can't imagine you spending 200 grand for an ambulance.
That's right, I didn't say that.
Very expensive.
They can add the price of a fire truck, aren't they? A fire truck.
Let it keep the statement there, because if you got the full explanation, you'll tell it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm blaming that on you. I asked you to move on.
Wait a minute, while we're talking about ambulances, though, and I know this has got nothing to do with the budget, you've got a surplus ambulance?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hold.
And it's surplus?
Yes, sir.
The college needs one.
Okay. Well, we haven't surplus it yet. It's on, it's waiting for a decision. It's, it's sitting over there, waiting for a decision.
Well, I need to ask this question out loud also. Have you been approached from a high school about a surplus?
Yes, sir.
And where is that on the priority?
Right now, we've got one, one truck, and we've had two educational institutions ask for that truck. So, we're kind of on the bubble on which way we're gonna go with that.
I know where there's one that's got a paw stuck on the side. I'm sorry, Mel, I can't.
All right, are there any more questions for the EMS?
Do you want us to put money in for a remount or zero that out completely?
Let us, give us, give us a couple of days to go with fleet.
We can look at net, because there was one in net, and there was a brand-new one for EMS.
I thought that was two in net.
No, there was only one.
You people spend too much money for that.
There was one in net, when we cut that, that was one, and then one in, in here. Maybe the thing to do is, is to put, decide where we need the one, and probably EMS, and then maybe look at a remount for net.
Y'all. Net's gone. There ain't nothing for net. You might get a remount here.
Okay.
So, you just need to find a good spot.
Yes, sir, I can.
We'll give a candle staff and then go out and look.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
They're leaving now, aren't they?
I hope so.
Let's see here, must be the very first here. Oh, he's got a special tab, it's blue. That's you.
It is. Let me sure it is.
Mel? Thank you.
My God, there's a lot of stuff to do in this.
Good afternoon.
Lot of pages here.
I just, I just have one request before we get started. I'd like to defer all budget questions until after the budget's passed.
Defer it all, huh? Okay.
You got us mixed up with somebody else.
Now, I would like to ask, put me on the, on the budget meeting early next year, really early. I want to be one of the first ringers coming in. I think they got the soft stroke.
Trying to make me sweet, aren't you?
We were just as hard yesterday, we just couldn't find anything.
I've been seeing people leave with tears in their eyes, I was scared to come in.
How you doing?
Did you see Andrew left there? He only stopped.
I know, he's keeping me straight. Did you see that?
Takes a whole village.
Got to be a little bit more subtle there. What is this here? Who can read these numbers? I'm an old man, got to get a magnifying glass. Yeah, we're looking at the Cliff Notes version.
Oh, I found this partial denture. We just need to turn this department up to a city.
Huh?
Partial denture. They won't last to come down here.
I see their techniques now. Overwhelm them with information.
That's exactly what I was looking at.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, you've been on our board, that's unfair. Unfair. You know our tactics.
Oh, yes. I do have a question. I had somebody ask me this today. Is the dental lab up and running?
Yes. Since January.
Can you bring back to this board from inception until today, the cost or the revenue generated from the mobile dental lab?
Yeah.
Because I think we're gonna be surprised that it's been a very good investment.
Yeah, you will not be disappointed with those numbers. I mean, Mr. Honeycutt's already seen just the revenue on the cost or profit analysis just for the January operation, and we're already running in the black. I mean, the model that we're doing is, is the correct model, it's a good model, it is serving these kids, and it's, it's doing what it's doing. The county's not putting any money in it.
We were all concerned that the, it sat idle for several months.
Well, we were looking for a dentist that did. Now, we have a contract dentist that works during the school year, so we're only in the schools. As a matter of fact, we're at Eastern Wayne Elementary now. The 14th, we're gonna pull it because the school year's over, so we're gonna park it at facilities, get all the maintenance done on it, get it ready for the start of the school year in August, and we'll be out at Northeast Elementary then.
And, and understand that when that dental unit was parked, I mean, it's, the really disservice is to the, is to the kids, because it's really not costing us much money to park the unit after it's already been working for two years. So, it already, it already paid for itself at that point in time. The, the main thing is it was really the service. I mean, the cost that we were incurring was marginally based on our dental hygiene. A dental assistant is the only full-time county staff we have. And what we used her, we used her to work in the maternity clinic, and we, so we rerouted some of those costs, and so we weren't billing it to our dental program. We were billing it to other programs where she was being rerouted, helping administrative work as well as our maternity program.
When you, when you say billing to the dental program, you're talking about billing it to.
It's a term, it's a term I use to say how we, how we report what our expenditures are. We're not, we're not reporting expenditures in the dental program because she's.
But the dollars are coming from whom? The revenue is coming from who?
The revenue is coming from wherever she's, her services are applied. That's where we draw down the revenues to pay her, or draw down the money to pay her.
Are the students paying for it, or is it being paid for by the, someone else for the students?
Say that again, Mr. Cermody.
Are the student, are the families paying for the service, or is it being paid for by some governmental agency?
Oh, you mean, you mean for the, for the care that we're rendering? Okay, that's being paid for by Medicaid? Or Health Choice, or if this uninsured child, we'll use some of our funds to pay for that. In the past, we were getting grant dollars, and they, they keep, they keep taking away all of our opportunity to pull down grant dollars to pay for uninsured children through, for dental services. But in the past, we were using some child health funds for that.
And you probably, I'm sure you will miss sharing this with the board, but I think you shared it in a regular meeting one day that there was a grant that maybe you had, had access to last year that you didn't get this year. Other folk did get it, you might want to just share that. Or maybe not.
Well, I'm looking at surplus, that was the question, I figured you just didn't get the grant, because it went getting money down to zero.
Medical Assistant Plan Grant, where we, it, it was a good thing, because two agencies within the county received the grant award. Three, three agencies applied, the Health Department and two others, and we, we were the only one that didn't receive any money, even though prior year we had received some funds. Still don't know really why, hadn't really got a good answer.
Who was the grant from?
Uh, it was through the Office of, the MAP Grant was through the Office of Rural Health.
Rural Health?
It was the Rural Health Office.
And they didn't give the Health Department in a rural county?
And the money was for, for basically seeing uninsured primary care, and of course, our pregnancy care, our prenatal care is considered primary care. So, and the fact that the, you know, like I said, when you look at the volume of people that we serve in the Health Department, I was a little surprised that we received zero award.
And who did receive it, again?
Uh, my understanding is that Watch received the grant and Wish received the grant.
And how much is the grant?
The maximum you could apply for was 150. I don't, I don't actually know what their exact award was. I, I don't, I didn't get the final number, though. They had, they sent me a, they sent me an award list that showed what they had applied for, what everybody applied for through the state. But, but, but I thought at first those were the award numbers, but that was just what, what had been applied for. I don't know what the final awards were. I know that like only 26 health departments out of 44 that applied even received any money, which was a little surprising, too, considering that the purpose of this grant was to help us where we had lost money. You know, you'll see in that budget sheet where we, we've lost grant dollars in our maternity program over the past couple of years. And so, we thought this was gonna be the state's way of helping us close that gap, so getting a zero award was pretty disappointing to me.
So, it is through the state?
Yes, that's correct. It was a state panel.
Mr. Honeycutt, I, I think we need to send a letter to that department and voice our concerns that they did not give us that grant. And maybe we can get some adjoining counties to also send that.
That, that's the way I felt about it the day that you shared that in the regular meeting, and that's why I wanted you to say this out loud.
Send a courtesy copy of that to the governor as well.
It's, it's really frustrating, because what, that grant was allowing us to bill $100 per visit, not per person, but per visit for anybody uninsured. And if you know, know some of our client base, we see some uninsured people, so about 40, about 42% of our clients.
Oh, that doesn't make sense, that they wouldn't renew the grant for the county.
Well, it doesn't make sense that we get $0. I mean, I can understand they're saying, well, we're gonna, since we had more people apply, that's usually how it works. They say, well, we had X amount of dollars. But what they told us in a meeting in Raleigh was that they, they gave us this really nice, excited speech that they had received more money in this grant pool, so they would be able to award more. And see, last time I applied for that grant, I jointly applied with one of the other agencies, because they said that would give us a stronger grant application. This time, we were told, because there was more money on the table, do not joint apply, apply individually, because your county will get awarded more money. And we did get awarded more money, we got awarded a whole lot less.
What's the name of that grant again?
I think it's called the MAP Grant, it was a medical. Medical, yeah, Medical Access Planning Grant Money, it's through the Office. It's not gonna be on there, Mr. Page.
But so, about us really knowing, more money could have come to the county, but it just didn't come to you, it came to the other.
That's right. So, there's a benefit to that. I mean, you know, we don't want to discredit the point that it's great that those monies are coming to the county, and I'm happy for the agencies that received it, but given, given the fact that under our premise, you know, we, we, we can't turn people away, we have to see everybody that comes through, that meets our eligibility, and so, and that's pretty much everyone. The only really restriction we have is certain programs only see county residents, where some programs don't, they don't have to be a county resident. So, they're, and our maternal program is that, you have to be a county resident. So, that was just very disappointing.
But we're still having to provide those services, aren't we?
Absolutely.
So, that means that in essence, the county is gonna have to increase its funding to offset that. I mean, the fund has got to come from somewhere, and it's reflective in regards to fund balance appropriated and transfers from other funds.
Correct.
Or you would have to turn those clients away, which I.
Well, we can't. We, I mean, we don't have that option.
Ambulance are a tool.
Yeah, right, right, that is, that's not an option for us.
That's, it just doesn't make much sense.
Okay, where are we at?
We're just scanning right now.
I was gonna ask you about that gang families connect, which is 051, had 85 last year and it's gone to 0.
Yeah, that, that whole program, that was discontinued, so along with those funds, went three positions that are no longer with us.
Got mothers like that I'm seeing here, I assume that's.
And just remind the board, in those cases like that, where we, we have employees that are funded, I think we had four, three? We had three employees that were funded under that grant. Under those grant conditions, you know, we, we make all employees sign a statement, understanding that they're employed under a grant, and if those funds are eliminated, then we eliminate the position, and so they're made aware of that upon hiring. And that's actually what we did. We, we basically terminated those positions, but we were lucky because we had two, we had three good people. So, I don't want to act like we, one of them wasn't, we had three good people, but two of them, we were able to hire back over time in other programs that we had vacancies, which was, because they're good staff, they've already been trained in these areas. And one of them, the other one, the third one, actually got a job in an adjacent county in, in public health. So, it worked out good for them, there, that was no, that wasn't, didn't turn out to be a tragedy story, but it was tragedy anytime we got to tell them that their job comes to an end in 30 days.
Let's stand corrected, actually, the transfers from other funds, which would be from the county, actually went down.
Their earnings are probably increased.
So, we took it from their fund balance. How much money you got in your fund balance? Maybe we need to borrow some money from you guys.
What are our interest rates?
Million? What are your interest rates, I like it?
I gotta run a credit check on you first.
190, professional services.
Yes, sir.
Well, it appears that has, oh, over the last year, two years, budgets, that's gone up 90%. It went from $24,000 to $45,000.
In which, which cost center?
190.
This is the cost center, second seven.
It's what?
I've got 19 cost.
Oh, excuse me. 131, 51110.
That's administration.
5110, 190.
Okay, that's administration.
Professional services there is at 45,000.
45, 296. A lot of that includes our QRMD, our medical records system, maintenance, and those kind of things for our electronic medical records, our pharmacy contract software, that's the hiring. 3,000 of that is for our public health cost analyst that we contract with the Public Health Alliance. He does a Medicaid cost analysis for all the counties, all the health departments in the state, and we pay a portion of that to the alliance, that's $3,000 of that.
Yeah, that was a cost that the state originally had incurred, but when they began to do Medicaid reform, they felt that this individual was in a conflict of interest, working for the state, doing cost settlements for local health departments who are paid through the state, so we'll, we can debate the confusion of that. So, they, basically, that person left the state Department of Public Health and came to work for the, our association, our alliance, the Public Health Alliance. And so, now what they did, where his salary was state-funded, now it's being provided by all 85 health departments. We pay based on our cost settlement numbers.
The drugs you have at, I'm sorry, drugs, let's see, that'd be 510, 5110, 238. And it's drugs.
That's for vaccines, adult vaccines, rabies vaccines, drugs for our crash cart primarily. 90,000 of that is for adult vaccines.
90,000 for adult vaccines?
And we charge for those.
Yeah, we charge for those.
And they don't, and they don't slide on sliding fee scale.
They're a fixed rate.
So, they, we recoup all of our costs on that.
So, you had offsetting revenue?
Yes. In our insurance and our fees.
And some of those, if we don't, if, in some of those vaccines, not all of them, but some of those, if they, if they're not used, we can turn those back into the vendor for a refund.
All right, let me ask the question this way. Based on all of the pharmaceuticals that you purchase, do you have a buyer's group that you buy those through, or do you just buy them strictly from Wayne County Health Department?
We buy them through, it's called a 340B Drug Program that provides low-cost drugs for health departments, community health centers, those kind of things for, for low-income, low, underinsured people. And we get considerable savings on all of our drugs through that.
Well, because you're buying and collecting. Well, because you're buying collectively as a group of you as such, and is there any way that EMS can start participating in that, through that?
I don't know if they would, if those drugs that they purchase would even be a 340B-type drug. Most of those that are 340B are for TB, STDs, and birth control.
But the big answer to that is really what we'd have to know is basically know what type of medications they use, and the 340B has a formulary. And we'd just have to match to see if those medications are on the 340B formulary. But the difference now, there's a law with 340B that we need to make sure to understand, because this is where we lost, we lost about 10, almost 12% of our revenue, some of our revenue on the drugs themselves, not on the total program, in family planning, because originally, we could buy 340B prices, and then we could bill that visit for a family planning patient, plus we could bill for the actual cost, I mean, the allowable amount for the drug. So, say, if it was an IUD, an interuterine device, it might be, we might could get it on 340B for $120. We might could bill $280 for it. So, we'd make money on that. But then, the difference was for that because we're not a profit business. That money would then get diverted in to help cover those uninsured or on the sliding fee scale. Problem with that was just recently on under 340B, they changed that. So, now, under Medicaid, you can only bill the cost of that drug.
What we pay for.
We can still bill our normal office visits, but if we pay 120, we have to bill 120. So, that was a kind of a...
We're just trying to find some way to lower our cost of drugs.
Well, then, we just have to look at the formulary.
I'm trying to talk to Mel.
Yeah, if they look at the formulary, there could be use, potential use for that.
And I wish you good luck on that, but based upon just my, you're picking up some of the things you say you might be ordering. I don't know whether the EMS truck would necessarily need any of those on a regular basis.
Are y'all getting a new computer or something? A Macintosh computer on 262?
Is that still 110?
131.
510, okay, 5110. Majority of that cost is replacement of Cisco phones and also replacing thin clients. $7,500 for thin clients for that, just for that program alone, and 6,600 for Cisco phones.
And we get that quote, we get that quote from Chris Cowan through IT. They do the calculation and give us the quote on what to put in.
Why would you be replacing phones?
Because IT says we need to.
Someone's going to 12, they need years old.
They run the IT plan.
Same with some of the other stuff they have. They class them every place.
I like his ads because they tell me I got to.
And Chris Cowan takes care of my IT budget?
I mean, that's not really being stark. That's really the truth. I mean, they call us up and tell us that these things need to be replaced. You know, we don't get into a large debate about why, because they're IT.
Usually, they're obsolete. They're no longer supported or something like that.
You don't look a gift horse in the morning.
Last year, we did with the Maxwell Center, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Got a buyer's group for that.
Yeah, because they were budgeted at 550 and came in at 350, I think, on the funds last year.
Oh, my goodness, they've got other departments here. Look at all this.
I think the big thing to look at, Mr. Daughtry and the board, is to look at what the county's allocation really going in, because of a lot of stuff we draw down through our block grants, we draw down through our reimbursables, our Medicaid revenues, et cetera, and our fees. You know, it's what the county's contributing, and mainly, the for the most part, that increases, and Ken always corrects me before I go to jail, is the fact that that's tied pretty much into the pay, the employee increases in pay as well as some of the IT, correct?
That was the bulk of it, yes, with the salary adjustments last year.
So, there is some additional monies. We're asking from local dollars, but that's to cover the insurance change in the cost of insurance.
Where are you showing that you are requesting an increase? I mean, I already gave you...
This was from, earlier this fiscal year where they did the salary study in the Health Department and bumped up everybody's salary.
Yeah.
Well, now, it's reflected in the budget proposal.
Right.
Because we've still got to pay for that this year.
So, there is a slight, a slight change in the local appropriations, but I want to be transparent about that.
Would you point that out to me here? What line item are you showing that?
Mainly 121. Any of our 100 series is payroll.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, I mean, scattered through those cost centers because that's where the salaries are put in. So, it's the salaries across the board.
Oh, we're winded with the information, in other words. I looked for one line item, and that is 3981980. Transfers from other funds. I assume that's the county.
That's the county appropriations.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any other line item that comes from the county?
That and our fund balance.
Well, that amount in this budget is $2,411,000, coming from the county funds.
Yep, that's 30%, about 31%.
Well, last year, in the current year, it's $2,841. So, it actually went down $400,000.
From the current, yeah.
Yes, from the current.
Minus the comparisons from the last year's proposal. And a lot of that is the, well, it was the salaries, some of that went in there, as well as, what did we have to pay for that?
Well, was that the, I don't remember.
What all we pay for? Oh, the feasibility study was put in our budget along with some county dollars to pay for that.
Right.
And we did use more their fund balance this year than last year.
Yeah, and that's what I...
You have to look at both of them combined, and if you look at the change in the two line items combined, you're up $143,600.
That's what I...
That is correct. However, most of it came from their fund balance.
That's correct. But that's what they would also consider county dollars.
Well, as long as they're spending their money, that's okay.
That's just why I just want to make sure you understand. So, I mean, and this is something, as he said, that we just had to carry over to this new budget because of the study that was done last year. This is when it comes to, comes to roost, starting now, truly. So, that's the only difference. I just want to be aware, and it's not that significant.
We're not doing another study this year now?
No, not unless you want to.
That's good.
Yeah.
Good.
So, that's really...
That's your decision.
That's the key lines to be looking at.
It really is.
That stuff back here is just broken out.
Because it's about 28%, about 28% of our total budget is county dollars in both those line items, whether you're looking at the fund balance and the local appropriations, that's what I call them. And that's still pretty good because we're actually about 66% of what the average health department's funding is for local dollars. They're about 45%, and we're about 28%. So, we're, you know, we're still being, I think we're being very conscientious about our use of our funds.
In general, do you accept Visa and MasterCard?
Yes.
Do you charge a service fee for the use of that?
No.
There's another one.
There's another one.
We're seeing this grab.
The bank charges us a fee for using...
You're exactly right. But you don't charge the customer anything.
We don't.
And we're going to, we're going to have...
A surcharge. It would be a surcharge. We don't, we don't do that.
I think our revenues would drop considerably if we charged a surcharge for someone to use their credit or debit card.
Yeah.
Because when we implemented using that credit debit card machine a few years ago, our revenues went way up.
Yeah.
And because now...
We don't want to discourage that.
Yeah, we don't want to discourage that.
I've heard that conversation this morning, and I know my colleagues want to balance a sheet in a certain way, but my thought was, if you're getting a debit card or credit card, you're not getting a bounced check.
Exactly.
And we're not getting someone walking out the door.
I'm talking about the loss gain ratio is the way I look at stuff a lot of times.
Our return checks have just about decreased enough.
For every plus, there's a minus.
As long as you get your money right away.
I've been thinking, I thought, boy, I'm going to have to say this out loud.
That's the point that Ken was making, is when we changed our billing, we even changed our physical routing of patients through certain clinics where we were seeing some patients walk out. We were trying to capture them. So, you know, that's exactly right, as she said, and Ken said just before that. We captured that money just then, and we don't, we don't wait for a payment later. So, it really has helped.
You're good, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good too, Michael.
God, y'all got off easy. Thank you.
Pretty complex.
Remember that.
All right, we're done?
We've already done information technology.
Didn't say we're going to bring him back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, we got social services.
Social services.
Hello, there, young lady.
26. Have they got their own tab, too?
They're right before the Health Department, on the way to have...
I see. I got it. I got it.
Good afternoon.
Ain't no big...
You charge someone $25 for an initial application for child support?
Yes, sir, 25 or 10, but that's, and that's going to go up to 35 next year.
That is going up.
Mm-hmm. That's set by the state.
Oh, it's set by the state?
Yes, sir.
So, we don't even have to compare it to others?
No, sir. In fact, those fees that you see are set by the state.
All of them?
Yes, sir.
Well, we can't change those. It is what it is.
Yes, sir, we can.
On the very first line, you know, the first step, file collected, that seems to be going down over a year.
Well, we were having, prior to this year, we actually just had one investigator. So, we have now added a couple of positions in that department. We anticipate that we might have higher collections through fraud.
You just didn't want it reflected in the budget?
Well, I mean, it's all a guesstimate, so...
Well, I always thought you needed more than one anyway, because that's what was over there when I was still...
Yes, sir, and we have, we have three now.
That was just too massive of a job.
It is.
And probably for three people, too.
It really is.
I forgot, Tammy. You do come from another county, and you're used to underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses.
Yes, well, I mean, we want to be, we don't want to overestimate and be disappointed. We want to give a good, accurate picture of what we think might happen.
Well, the big question I have then, it would be 330004, daycare child, went from 4.7 to our current appropriation, 299, 3 million, and then it dropped down on this budget to 50,000.
Yes, sir.
What happened to all the millions of dollars?
Well, they're still there, but the state writes those checks now through NCFAST. So, childcare has rolled into that program. And the reason we actually put $50,000 in there is just in case there might be a glitch in NCFAST, that we could pay our providers and then get reimbursement from the state.
So, all of that now no longer goes through your department. It goes through the state?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
We still determine eligibility. Eligibility and reviews. I mean, we have to see the citizens, and we determine the eligibility, but the payment part now goes through the state. We still have that program, and we still have a budgeted amount that we can use for Wayne County, the checks just written from the state.
That's cut down your workload, I would say.
Not yet, because as I said, it went into NCFAST.
As I said.
So, actually, it's increased our workload because we had about $35,000 sitting out there with under and over payments, that we had to work each child, not each family, each child.
But you don't think NCFAST is going to have a glitch, do you?
Oh, no, sir. Never experienced that before.
You didn't take that 50,000 and put a million and 50,000, because I'm telling you, NCFAST is still a necessity.
It is.
In 330029, Medicaid transportation, again, in 1617, it was 714. Current appropriation in half, almost, 341, and now, we're down to 157. What's happening there?
Providers are billing NCTrax.
Now, do what now?
Providers are billing in a Medicaid system. And so, we bill part of it, but if providers can go into the system and bill themselves.
For example, Gateway bills their own travels now, and we only are charged for what we provide, like vouchers and the cost of no-shows. So, we still reimburse or submit reimbursement the old-fashioned way.
So, you're as bad as I am. I still call it Gateway, but it's GWT.
I apologize. GWTA has improved their turnaround and quickened their cash flow by using NCTrax.
Okay.
First month revenue is 157 as well, so is this a wash on that?
They spoke well of the relationship this morning.
We still schedule.
Yeah.
And have to do eligibility.
But the dollars actually come...
But some of the dollars do.
Right.
Of course, that's usually on a reimbursement-type basis.
Sure.
As I'm saying, they spoke well of the relationship this morning. We're right in that.
Well, you got good answers so far from my yellow tabs.
Well, good.
Well, get to your situation.
Are we done?
Do what now? Whoa. Transfers from general fund. Whose general fund are you transferring from?
110, I think it must be. Let's get to that.
If you look at what they have, and I've got revised numbers, but if you look at revised numbers for fund balance appropriated and transfers last year versus what they're asking for, they're up probably about a half a million dollars. So, I think I've spoken to you all a little bit about this already. Their fund balance is pretty much depleted. I mean, we've got to leave some in there. There's a couple of, there's a couple of things that we feel like is the problem. I think, I think one of them, probably Tammy can explain better than I can, and that has to do with your foster care. But the other piece of it that I've talked to you all about is the lapsed salaries. So, we added some positions last year, expecting that we would have, you know, a good bit of lapsed salaries to absorb some of that. And we will have some lapsed salaries, but it will not be what it has been in the past, because there was a, what we call a contra account put in last year in the amount of $785,000, which basically ate up a good bit of what we are used to receiving on lapsed salaries. So, in other words, if you had some savings on salaries that were vacant, positions that were vacant, where we might would have in the past 1, 1 and 1/2 million, I'm just going to throw some numbers out there. Now, you're going to have 600 to 800,000 because you've got to subtract that contra account from the savings. It's, that's already been accounted for in their budget for this year. So...
You know, that makes sense to you.
It did.
I'm glad it did, because it went right over my head.
We just didn't budget lapsed, we budgeted lapsed salaries. We anticipated lapsed salaries. So, we reduced our salary line item by $750,000.
Those extra positions, we filled now.
We filled, and so, therefore, that expenditure is that we're not going to have the lapsed salaries that we thought.
Tammy, maybe you can help me with this.
Okay.
What was the gentleman's name?
Mr. Merritt.
Earl.
Earl, Earl Merritt.
Earl came to us with a proposal that you increase the positions, but those positions would remain empty. You wouldn't fill them. But you would go ahead and add those positions, and by doing so, somehow or another, it was supposed to have, it really went over my head, to be right, honestly. But the bottom line was, we agreed to the positions, but never really felt like they would be filled. Are you telling me that you filled the positions?
We have not filled them, but we need to fill them next year.
Well, we never created them for you to fill them. They were created for some budgetary purpose.
My understanding, they were, we normally had a 10 to 15 people that we were short on positions, that we have vacancies. What the thought process was, if you created seven more positions, you would fill those, hopefully, then you would have that, you would always stay ahead of the game, if that makes sense. You would still have an average of 10 people vacancies, but it would be...
But what we're saying now is, we are filling full employment plus the addition that we added. Am I understanding that correct?
We have not filled the seven that you approved. We filled the other positions that were approved.
But then, stop. You didn't fill them.
Remember, you said to reduce our vacancies. We did. And what I want to say is, we're probably, today, we have eight vacancies. And what I want to say is, we're probably, today, we have eight vacancies. You had an all-time high in 16.
21, 22.
26. So what, what I understood was Earl's thought process is that you're always going to have vacancies, but you will have trained employees, you know, as you move through and continue to hire. You're always going to have that number of vacancies, but we have more opportunity for people to be trained. I mean, quite honestly, this is in our child welfare area. We're not meeting standards. We're not meeting caseload standards. We're, we're not meeting some of the other requirements. I believe you've heard me talk before about the new state-county agreements. We have 21 areas that we have to meet, and we're not meeting them. I think that when we looked at where we would do with those seven positions, we're going to fill them at different levels. We've evaluated each position and say, do we need IATs, which is our highest-level social worker? Can we back those up for some clerical support to assist social workers, but not play, pay that whole salary? But, I mean, the truth is, we're not meeting standards.
Ma'am, then, question. The bottom line is, do you need to go ahead and fill those seven that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
But then, why not?
Well, here's why we told them not to. Here's why not, because, one, we never anticipated, one. Number two, we've gone from 2016, where the county is funding 3.3 million, to where now the recommendation is 5.8 million. I mean, you're almost, I mean, you're talking about a huge amount of money coming from our fund. 5.8 million. All of the reserves have basically been eaten up. So the only source to balance the budget is from the county, and, I mean, that's, that's huge. That, that's huge. You're talking about, in the current appropriation, 4 million is what we had, and we've gone to 5.8. That's $1.8 million increase.
Now, ma'am?
Am I correct?
No, what I understand, last year it was 4 million, and then the fund balance, so really, our total was last year.
You have to take their, when we, when we're saying county money, you have to consider their fund balance plus the transfers, because the fund balance is the county money. We just leave it sitting in that pot. So you kind of have to take the transfers plus the fund balance, compare it to last year to this year, and if you look at that, it's a half a million up.
Okay. I understand. So it's a half a million dollars, not 2 million?
Right. And what I want to tell you is that 34% is the county share. So in our budget, we're talking about 66% federal, and, well, state has a little, but mostly federal reimbursement.
Yeah, that was a question I would really ask you, just because when you talk about money, it, my understanding was just like it's not all county money. It's money, but it didn't say it was all county revenue, or county expenditure going out.
But the 5.8...
When I said, why don't we go ahead and fill them, I won't talk about, we just absorb all that out of our pot. It would come equitably or proportionally or whatever.
Let me make sure I understand. How much is the increase for the county share?
The county share increase is about a half a million dollars.
About a half a million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Forget federal, forget all of those, from the county is a half a million dollars. Well, that's a huge thing, hit for us, and I want to minimize that. How can we minimize that? How can we reduce the increase? Because if we were putting in 5 million, and now we're at 5, you're talking about 10% increase in our cost.
Well, quite honestly, I think we should have budgeted differently over the past couple of years, and that wasn't done, and I'm not sure why. We should have been buying equipment along so we could be ready when NCFAST rolled out. We're behind in that. Most of our foster children are placed out of county, which soars our cost up, and not only that, we're paying additional overhead for private providers to license foster homes. We've already started foster care licensing in Wayne County, and we think that we can lower those costs. They've been increasing over the past several years. I mean, those are things that cannot be fixed overnight. I mean, we have to have our foster children placed. We have to have the equipment for NCFAST. Personally, being from another county, I budgeted that over about a three-year cycle, or two years, and then would have this year. I knew it was coming. I can't answer why it wasn't done. I think that we will also be able to lower some of our foster care cases, the cost of those, but those are things that don't happen overnight either. So this is a good, honest budget of where I think that we are. If we want to talk about county money, we did put 50,000 in for Medicaid costs. You know, the counties have to pay back any errors now. I don't know how much we owe today. Hopefully, nothing. I'm not sure, because those audits will start to find those issues. We've restructured in every way that we've known. We took a team approach. We moved all of our workers around. And to, we're getting ready to restructure the whole income maintenance unit, and out of those, we're going to pull a quality assurance team. So they'll second-party every adult Medicaid case that comes through that agency, because we can't take a chance of having a million-dollar payback. So quite honestly, there's some things that needed to be changed. I know that's a lot of money, but unfortunately, that's where we're at today. What I can tell you is, as we progress, if we don't need to fill a position, we're not going to fill it just to fill a position.
That's, that's, that's what I was, just on the tip of, because you, we talked about the settlement. Then you used a word that said, we may not be meeting standards. You used the word standards. And inside of my head, I started to calculating what the settlement versus the standard. And of course, standard is the optimum, you'll be purely level. In life, things doesn't always turn out to be purely level. So my question was, are, are we, we're not behind the eight ball? Well, with customer service, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Are the people, if, if the question was asked of you, Wayne County doing enough to service our population who need it? And I didn't say it was going to be perfect, but are we keeping, in your heart and soul, that like you say, we're doing the best we can, and we're doing pretty good? Or are we short somewhere that would be harmful?
Yes, we're short in areas that would be harmful, and that is child welfare today. We should only have 10 families for each evaluation. We have upwards of 15 families that social workers are working with. Part of that's been the turnover. Part of that has, that happens, you know, as you have turnover. Workers don't step in the door and are able to take a case. But on our income maintenance, we're passing our Medicaid report card. We're passing our USDA standards. I don't know where we'll be at as quality, if they find an error in a case, but we're, we're getting the benefits out. If you're asking me, am I worried about harm to the citizens? Yes, in child welfare, I am.
And, and why, why is that about child welfare? What's, what's been the driving force? New employees, turnover?
It's, it's...
I forgot. I'm sorry.
I think, I think I would honestly say it has been, the majority has been turnover. It takes a long time to fix turnover and to stabilize, so...
Mr. Bell?
Yes, I have a question. Doesn't the state authorize you so many positions in each department?
No, sir.
I mean, you, you can hire as many people as you want to?
Yes, sir.
Based on caseloads, there's a standard for caseloads that you can use as a guide.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you know, I'm retired from state government, and, and I have never seen no organization that weren't authorized so many people. You know what I mean? You, I mean, I had certain normals that I could hire, and that's all I could get, unless they, state reaffirmed some additional people. I didn't understand it when the gentleman came up and told us he needs seven additional people that he weren't authorized to have, and he wanted us to approve. I just had never heard of that before.
No, cap, now.
Those seven people wouldn't the county, wouldn't that be on the county if the state have not given you permission to have that?
50, 50.
So those seven positions, we don't have 50% of the...
That's correct, but this, local government doesn't have a capped number of employees based on population. It's, like I said, they give us guidelines for caseloads, but we're not limited in the number of employees that, you know, like say, Wayne County could only have 200 employees in their Department of Social Services, because it could just be based on need. For example, child support, if we have a larger volume of service, we might have more than a, in a bigger county. So it's just based on our services and our caseload, not a capped number.
And what we have to remember, too, is the poverty rate in Wayne County is higher than some other counties. So when you look at the amount of people that you need, you have to look at the amount of citizens we're serving, because poverty rates drive who needs services, too, in our income maintenance area, in our child welfare area. You know, of course, there is no economic limit there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Hey, you first.
I think I found 200,000 of this.
Okay.
Non-capital computers. Am I understanding that in this budget year coming up, you're wanting to spend 200,000 for computers, new computers?
Well, they're not new computers. What we have to do is, we'll have to have dual monitors. We can't even complete all our training that we need for NCFAST in our child welfare department, because they don't have dual monitors on their desks. Our thin clients that we have can't support the training, so we have to upgrade the thin clients that we have. Also, we have to have scanners, because we're going to have to start scanning everything into NCFAST now. So I guess the short answer is, thin clients with other pieces of equipment that we need.
Well, let me clarify my question then.
Okay.
This would not be a recurring cost. This is something that's in this coming year's budget. Once that's done, you're not going to repeat it going forward.
We don't anticipate repeating that. No, sir.
That's the wrong answer then, no.
No. So the answer would be, no.
In other words, it is a one, it's really a one-time charge. 200 of the 500 really is county funds to buy new equipment.
Until they wear out, until they wear out.
Well, of course, but they're not going to wear out in a year.
No, no.
All right, so that's 200 grand now, then.
Well, but yeah, I think one of the big things that, in trying to work with Tammy since she's been here, is been how far behind we are on NCFAST.
We got to do some ketchup.
We have to do some ketchup.
See, now, this, this is beginning to make sense.
Right. Now, I will tell you that we were supposed to roll out with NCFAST June 25th, and that has been pushed back. And we were very excited that it had been pushed back. Had it rolled out June 25th, we would have had a disaster. So we, we know it's going to roll out, so we're hoping that we're going to be a little bit more prepared.
So Ryan, if I'm correct here, when I assume that you worked with them to get a budgeted amount for this equipment that they're talking about?
Right. It is, it is a one-time fee. They have to pay, they have some things left.
All right. Number two, there's a 40,000 increase on line item 261, which was office supplies, non-capital furniture. That's 5304, 261. There was 40 grand increase.
That's to purchase desks and chairs. Currently, we're, we're running out of room in the boarding building. Those items are, was it modular or cubicles?
Right.
But anyway, the services staff will take up that extra space, so when we bring our IMCs back to the county office building, we will need some additional desks and chairs for them to use. And we may not need all of it, because we do work with Kendall. If there's surplus items available, we always shop his stash.
But you do see, we, well, that's, that's, that's a big, we, current appropriation is 85, and you're going to 45. So, I mean, I take it that that's a reasonable estimate, or?
Yes, sir. We use state contract pricing, and we work with Office Depot, the county contract, so we use our resources through those, like I said, state contract and the county pricing.
And office supplies, of course, also went up pretty dramatically.
Yes, sir, because we've been budgeting for the last three to five years at around 174 to 185 employees. So with that being said, even in a paperless environment, more employees are generating more paper, pens. They need supplies.
That didn't make sense.
Well, but everything says it's paperless, but you have got to print out documents for people. You still have to have something to scan in. It's not all electronic signatures, and that's one of the things I don't think people realized a few years ago, when they were touting paperless. You know, you would just come into work and sit down, and there'd be no more paper, and we'd email you the budget. That's not realistic. It's not happening.
We brought a lot of copies today.
Well, undoubtedly, it was a shock to see a half a million dollar increase coming from county. But we certainly would not want to in any way impede your plan of making our DSS department more streamlined and more proficient, and meeting those expected goals of the state. So I'm through, Mr. Chair.
I want to ask a question. Yeah, I've been, you know, a few years removed from the board over there, and the Northwoods was beginning to come in at the time that I was there, that we made that decision then. Has it been effective, or did we spend the money well, or, let me know?
Yes, I think it's been effective. I mean, certainly, I don't know that, that if my decision, if it would have been my decision, I would have bought as robust of the system as it is, because we have the Cadillac, shall I say. We have it across all our programs and appointments. And we're going to have to make a decision at some point. We still have the contract with Northwoods. How we want to handle that? Do we want to be a converted data county when we, everything's in NCFAST? Do we want to do a federated system? There's a bridge that has to be built. We don't know the cost of the bridge. So the two, you know, systems can talk together. If not, we've got, we've got to be able to get our information from Northwoods. So there's going to be some decisions we'll make over the next year. Yes, I do think it has helped. I truly do think that it has helped.
It made me feel better that I made the right decision for one time in my life.
It, it was the best decision that y'all could have made. I mean, we, we've gotten rid of a lot of paper. We still have a lot of paper, but...
I know, before, you know, you had one file folder that had to be hand-carried from here to here, and here, and here. That was ridiculous.
Right, and, and so we've made, yes, I think it's been efficient. I think we're going to really have to examine that later.
As far as the number of employees that Commissioner Bell was asking about, just, I think, I think it varies from county to county, for example. In, in our child services, for example, we need to hire as many people as we feel is necessary in order to meet the mandates that the state has put on us. If we don't meet these mandates, then the state can come back and take away funding or whatever, penalize us. So I think it has to be done on a case-by-case basis, where you, where do you need the most help? The other thing is, is that Department of Social Services in Wayne County, over the three years, or say that I've been on the DSS board, has, as everybody knows, has done...
a tremendous turnaround since Tammy's been here, since Earl came. Everything is just really taking a turn and in the process of doing that, sometimes it costs a little more money, but hopefully that front, but hopefully down the road. But some of the expense that I'm seeing is that, just talking about Northwoods, some of the expense that I'm seeing is that NCFAST is not, is not compatible with no other software on the market.
It's never worked.
And it's never worked. And here we are sitting here with Northwoods, that's, that's a great system and we can't marry it into NCFAST and the big, the big argument is who's responsible for paying for that bridge? Is it DSS County or is it the state? Well, guess who we're going to push for, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold my breath. So any rate, y'all doing a great job. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I have no question. And I do want to say, we understand the concern about the transfer. We've met twice with Tammy and we've really been through this and trying to understand this and seeing the increase. But, but again, I think it does come down a lot to is, you know, NCFAST and child welfare and I think those are probably the big issues. And I will say, she is looking at a lot of different reorganization of the department and really putting the right people in the right positions. So I think she really is doing a great job in what she's doing.
Yeah, for that, I might get any phone calls, but thank you for that.
Well, it's all about the team. We have a really good team.
Tammy and Vicki, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next year, we're looking at a half a million dollar reduction.
Sure. I'm going to start working on that.
She always used to work in marketing. Ryan, they got you on here twice, right?
I'm good.
I thought you might, but I didn't think you wanted to come back and give us something. Who's going to do the central services?
That's 4200.
Yep.
So you got to go backwards.
I've already found it.
Central services.
Yep.
Put numbers there. 4200.
4200.
That's toward the front.
Ryan, are they buying all new desktops?
No, it's just replaced. They have some thick lines, they're quality gold. They're only good for five days and they're the older version of the two we have and we just can't use them anymore.
Okay.
You know, as we've talked about as well, there is a technology position that we will be sharing with IT and DSS and DSS will pay for half of that through their.
Well, we need to give her every opportunity to go ahead and turn that department around. Some questions.
If you have any questions, Christie's stepping in, but this is her first budget, so we told her we would help her out too, so.
We've already cut it by something like 40,000.
Oh dear, I am late.
Would y'all kind of explain the contra accounts?
Okay.
Because there are a number of contra accounts.
There are, and this is getting into lap salaries and indirect costs, which I know is two of your favorite topics. So contra accounts are basically not a revenue, but it is a reduction in your expenditure. So you have several contra accounts here for where you see I slash C and it might have a department beside it. That's all indirect cost.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy came back for more.
So you see the indirect cost, there's one for lap salaries and I'll move on to that in a minute, but the indirect cost, so I've explained before, there is a cost for finance and central services and human resources and all those general sort of departments, facilities, IT. There's a cost of doing business with those departments to our other departments that could pay for it, like Jetport or Solid Waste, things like that. So we charge those departments an estimated amount for that cost based on this study that we have done. And whatever we charge them, we reduce our expenditure here because that does save us some cost in the general fund.
This is the same figure you've seen in all the other departments.
Right.
These people match that.
Now, the biggest reason we do this is because we can get back from the state and Tammy would be able to speak to this, the indirect cost portion for social services. And then I think senior, can senior center get some back? I know also EMS can get some back on their Medicaid cost report. But the DSS, like all your DSS agencies have a cost report done by a third party so that they can reclaim some of that expenditure.
All right, good explanation. But let's take 001, the court. Cross the line there is $50,000.
Right.
Now, from my understanding, we are charging the courts for services that the county provides.
I don't know what number.
It was expenditures, central services.
It's the last page of the central services.
But it's 50,000 and you're telling me, is that for the utilities as an example for the court building?
Still in the country.
So how do you arrive at the 50,000?
You know, Kendall's janitorial service.
Right.
Yeah.
Depreciate, it's going to be their share of depreciation on the building that they're housed in, which is the courthouse.
Well, my point is this. I would say at the courthouse, a good 60 to 70% of the courthouse is court facilities. And how you possibly could say the depreciation of the building, the utilities, just clean the building, the security that we have downstairs, how you possibly could say that only $50,000 would cover that?
It does.
Everybody would love to hear that.
It does not.
Well, okay, good.
So court facilities is in Fund 111, it's a separate fund, but it does not, 50,000 is not enough to cover it. However, we supplement that fund. So in other words, because we have to provide the facilities for, for the courts. So we do charge them some indirect costs because they do get fees that we can use some of those fees for, but basically we put in more than the fees they receive. We make sure we charge them enough indirect costs that we get as much money as we can, but at the end of the day, the general fund is putting money.
I think you just answered my question, and that is, I want to maximize.
Yes.
Charges that we get in.
And we actually complete a report every year to show what expenditures we put out on the court.
Who does that report?
I do, or somebody in my office prepares it and then I review it, but, and it's, and their bottom line, the revenues minus expenditures is zero because we end up putting more into it.
Okay.
Do you want me to, I'm not trying to be funny, but there's lap salaries. Do you want me to explain that for this fund? It basically operates the same as DSS, so that's the only other contra account in this group.
Not for me.
Okay.
We can't change again.
You just are assuming that we would have 500,000 in lap salaries over the next budget year.
Well, what I, what I would say is, so the same issue that happened in DSS happened in this fund, in the general fund. That contra account was increased last year, which basically hurt what kind of savings we would have received off of any additional salaries that weren't used. So we've reduced that amount a little bit to get it back down to where we used to be because we have some expectation every year. I mean, we budget for salaries at the full amount. We don't take each position and say, oh, they're going to be here 10 months, they're going to be here nine months. We budget the salaries at the full amount. Well, all of the people or all of your positions are not going to be filled 12 months out of the year, which means you're going to have lap salaries. And every year, we have seen some type of, you know, expenditure savings where those lap salaries sort of fell out. But because this contra account was increased, that has eaten to some of our savings and the same in DSS.
And we're going to gradually, like I said, last year we were 200, excuse me, 550,000. This year, we're at 500,000. We didn't feel like we could go down 100 or 200,000, but over the next couple of years, we're going to gradually reduce that back down.
Jill, to give you some more heartburn, to show you how the court system works. If we wanted to move this court facility down on the edge of Green County line, just move it out of town, we couldn't do it. State won't allow.
But I want to move it anyway. Do we have any questions at all for Christie? I mean, it's her first budget, we have no question for Christie.
Well, she's not leaving yet because she's getting board of commissioners.
She's put out the cash unit, I don't know why.
Only till next week.
All right, so you moving the board of commissioners?
Yeah, 4110.
I don't see a thing in here where it says we got a pay raise. She's on it right now. You want someone to announce that?
Must be the first, about the first one up. There it is.
We need to take a pink at the start with.
I don't see no time paid. Jill probably going to want to cut the bottles of water we get up here.
So be the cash use.
Well, I see meals in session now to zero, what am I selling about?
We're going back to the Will Sullivan days.
So we had our last good meal today.
Last supper.
That's kind of like we had on death row.
We get some potty meat.
Potty meat. I ain't quick. Don't give you a better case of heartburn.
Travel, meals and lodging has gone down.
Well, we have been going to all those meetings.
I just quit going to Washington DC because it stays every time.
Every time we went there was.
If you go to one, you've been to them all, really.
Yeah, that's about true.
I don't have a problem with us going one time, but I mean, that's, to go every year, that's, that's just.
I don't see, I don't see the point of it. I don't see anything of this.
I got no questions on that.
No question. County manager, now we got.
Oh, now we're getting.
Now we're talking.
120.
Where's that $500?
I'm still waiting.
She, we asked the county manager to leave the room.
I'm still in the second line.
It wasn't the second one.
Ain't nobody backing up you. You got to leave. Is there a dollar stoned up in you somewhere? You got to pull a dollar out of the top.
I don't see any overtime, congratulations.
Surprise you asked that.
I will give you a calculation.
I'm just glad I didn't see.
That you'll not understand if you want me to.
I'm just glad I didn't see the law enforcement 5%. I thought everybody was going to go get a badge and a gun so they could qualify for the 5%.
I'm too old and lazy. I'm too old and lazy.
I do have a question. 231, program supplies up to $11,450. What is that?
Program supplies are, there's a variety of things that are included.
You're going to answer the question.
I'm going to start. I'm probably going to defer over here to the last part, but there's quite a variety that goes into that, retirement programs, some of the plaques and everything like that that we do when, when people will put all their years of service in. Last year, when the county manager retired and we had some celebrations and acknowledgement of the work that he had done, that's the line item that came out of.
We actually increased that line item during the year, so the revised budget is actually the same as what is listed here now.
Well, our county manager's not going to retire next year.
We had like the job.
And we're not going to give him a plaque.
The highway, right.
He'll give you a hug.
Well, we still might want to do more celebrations anyway.
My main concern is nothing in for background checks.
Let me make a note.
Is this for all people that may retire or whatever?
No.
No, just for the county manager?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we did the, what Candace said, we did the John Corr Highway naming ceremony.
My specs are $2,000 for training.
He needs it.
Part of it is, I do get ICMA and that's kind of in my employment is, so that'll be in Baltimore this year.
I'm not against that.
But you're not the only one that's in this department.
No, Christie, Chip and.
Carol.
Carol.
Hello?
Oh.
What did she say?
Okay, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's move on to finance.
Yeah.
4130.
Let's have her get a little giddy up here. But while I'm in this area, I don't have my sheet in front, I'll be on the Chamber of Commerce, did we correct that?
Yes, we did. Yes, sir.
It's on your revised sheet I gave you this morning.
I know, but I've got some of these sheets now.
You killed a redwood up there.
Looked good to me.
It does, I mean, I.
That said, I do want to ask a question here. I had it, I did, right at the tip of my tongue. Do we have, as your jobs and your workload has increased, do we have the right staffing? That was a quick no. Just, we might need to discuss that going forward because I have heard some concerns in regards to the workloads.
Yes, I agree.
My understanding, some of that has been somewhat resolved by a little bit of help from other departments or whatever, but it may be something that next year we will look at.
We're going to bring up this recording when that happens.
Any questions?
I mean, I'll agree with Mr. Darty. I mean, you know, as much as we're rough here, we see what this department does and, and you know, I'm not saying go out and hire three or four people, but it, but we've got to stay on top of it and pay attention to what's going on.
You know, as we've talked about, you know, one of the, the new positions that we talked about putting in here was a internal audit position and I think probably the discussion that I've heard is that maybe we need to just set money aside for a contract, you know, you know, just set aside, knowing that we want some internal auditing done, the money set aside that, that staff can kind of pick and choose, we're letting the board know as well where we feel like we want to do a deeper data dive. But that was budgeted at a full-time position, there would be half of that that would be available that, that even on a, a part-time basis, you know, that may be able to help some as well. So, and I just have not mentioned it to Allison before to Janice yet, but that could be something we look at.
You go ahead.
There were members of this board, and I was one of them, that felt like we did need to go ahead and bring in an internal auditor, but the, what we had looked at is kind of a shared position while not auditing would be helping you all out in finance, but really that would not probably work because an internal auditor has really got to be.
Separate.
Separate. Somebody with a real black hat and not being friends with anybody type thing. It's got to be kind of autonomous. So that kind of wouldn't work, but that would possibly.
That, and again, I apologize, I'm not, I just.
So as you're doing your final. So as you're doing your final furnaces, you might want to consider.
I mean, we appreciate that. I think we've shared a position in the past, but I think just from the fact that both offices have gotten busier and obviously the priority would always go to the county manager's office. We're seeing, you know, they're not able to help the finance office as much and we just have a huge administrative burden of just running our office. And so not having anybody to assist us with that, I mean, it's just, it's weighing on us more and more and it's lagging us down in our workload.
We did, we'll come back with a recommendation on that.
Thank you.
But we had discussed it, but you know, we.
We're still discussing.
We're still discussing it, but, but, you know, we hadn't forgot y'all.
We appreciate it.
But Craig, if they need help, I think we should give them the help, but it shouldn't be the internal auditor, I guess.
Oh, yeah, no, sir, I agree. Yes, sir. You're exactly right. If we look at it as a quote unquote contract position and just set maybe half of the salary aside that we were going to put in an internal audit, and then the other half we could use for temporary clerical help or part-time, full-time, part-time help.
Because really, you know, if we have a, if we contract for internal audit on some things, it's not going to really help them. It's going to put more work on them because they're going to have to be involved. I mean, they got to answer questions. I mean, they may not be involved with the audit, but that's who they're going to go to to ask the questions.
And it may not.
Really not, it's going to put more on them than less.
Well, and until we also, and I think it's actually a good idea, until we realize if it is a needed full-time, we know we do need some internal audit help, but until we determine if it is a full-time position or not, this may be the best way to go. At least dip our toe into it.
Anything else? Carol.
We're good.
Yeah, she, she cut her.
I work in your office.
I work in your office.
Nice to meet you, Mo.
And she actually cut her budget, so.
First, my staff's going to come in. Where's Bria? She coming? She's not.
Restroom, she's in the soon as I walk in.
All right, well, she'll be in here in just a moment. Here we go. If you guys don't mind, first thing that I want to do is give you an opportunity to share some of the comments that you've said to me, to these two people right here who have, I've only been in, with this department for the last 10 months as far as public affairs goes. Believe it or not, it hasn't even been a year yet. And a lot has happened and some of it has been outstanding and some of it has been really difficult. Bria, single-handedly, kept that department going and I could not be prouder to work with somebody with her talents.
And she was a full-time student while she was.
Absolutely. Then Joel, who I was blessed to work with before, agreed to come and work with the county and he has just taken that department and he's making it his own and in nothing but just tremendously positive ways for the county. And we're doing things that have never been done and we're getting compliments and just seeing the effects of it, not only across Wayne County, but beyond. And so I'm really proud of these two and I wanted you guys to have an opportunity to say something to them because you always tell me, but I want to tell them.
Well, I might have the most interaction with them because I am the chairman and so at least once every other week, I'm sitting down with Joe and seeing the kind of work he's doing and then, and the kind of work Bria's doing too.
Does that mean we cut the pay by 10%?
She actually cut, she's cut her budget now.
I already cut it for you. Don't touch my budgets.
I think you guys are doing a great job and I tell you all the time, so you hear it from me anyways. I let the others tell you.
Thank you.
But really, and I've talked to Bria before, you know, because she goes all the way back to when I was chairman. But when she come on board, you know, the, what an intern or whatever, she was kind of quiet and shy and laid back, didn't say a whole lot, but she broke out that shell. I mean, I really, I am proud of her. She's, she is. We've got a lot of county employees, but she's right up, right up close to the top. I mean, she does an outstanding job and we'll give you time and see what, see how you shake.
But Bria, try to teach them all you can.
You know, I might worry about a lot of things during the day, but these two right here never cross my path as far as worry. And that gives me great comfort as a manager, so I thank you both and.
Are you looking someone else to help them or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We finally got the notice sent out today by HR and so we're going to do that for a week and then go from there.
If I could say something.
Is it going to be nice?
I forgot all the compliments I passed on to you, but what I want to say is this, you all are the voice and the image created for Wayne County. And I want y'all just to remember that, that every time you produce something, every time you sign out a press release, anytime you put anything on the TV or whatever, it really does reflect our county. And y'all have just done a great job and I hope y'all continue. As we get more visitors coming in because of the Maxwell Center and we finally get the hotel out there and we really start in the years to come seeing more and more visitors, they're going to be tuning in to, I call it Channel 10. I'm not sure what channel it's on, but and get an overview and an image of our county. So just keep that in mind, that it is a reflection to the public of what we're all about. Y'all doing a good job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I remember when public affairs was a mess. It has been at certain points over the last three, four, five years. So I just want to say that I see, I see just a tremendous, this has turned out to be a really good relationship with you coming on, Carol, and all of you coming on to help us. I always felt like that we needed to have our own public affairs for the county, even though it wasn't a bad thing going with the city. But the bottom line is, is that if you're trying to, you can't speak for both, either for one or the other. And I, I think that we made the right decision to come back to our county and the staff and what you've done has just been a tremendous thing. I can see total different, even the citizens that I get information from you, that I share with the citizens. Y'all are so open and you know our county. Carol, you being in a position you're in, you know everything that's going on in our county. So I think we're getting out some really good quality information to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we go with the numbers, what our plan is, as you can tell, these two are a lot younger than I am. We want to attract younger to Channel 10. We want people to know that, God forbid, we have another disaster we have to face. They can tune in and find out and we'll actually be able to go live, no matter where we are in the county, unless you cut that from our budget.
Why would, why would there, we keep talking about Channel 10. Are we not also on Facebook and Twitter and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir. That was going to be my next part.
Okay, all right, because that's where you're going to hit the young ones with.
But we also want to bring them to Channel 10. And we have a lot of things that we're doing with that. Not only the Atrium TVs, which should be, they actually work. We're programming right now and fine tuning that. But also social media, which Joel and Bria have really upped the game on, on all of that. And he's done some live events, which have been just fantastic. Our budget for advertising has greatly increased because when there's not something bad going on, that's what public affairs is. We're supposed to be helping to tell people the good about Wayne County. And so even though we cut our budget right at $85,000, I believe it is, we increased our advertising and have increased one thing to help us go live. And it's something that we've got to replace, but we're going with something that'll let us be live no matter where we are in the county. And when we do that, public affairs is really going to be phenomenal. And it's already well at us way.
Well, I'd like to share, I think you're doing a very good job. Keep in mind that the public is going to, for better or worse, compare you to County 11 and Durham, because you're on TV. No one's going to say, oh, well, it's just a county. They're not going to do that. They're going to compare you with County 5, County 11, Good Morning America. So just, just keep that in mind when you're, when you're preparing to put something on TV that's going to be seen by everyone. I'm not saying you got to look like John Bell every day, but John sort of sets the standard and I'm surprised he was so casual looking today. He doesn't allow us to be casual very much, but John sort of sets the standard for how county commissioners ought to look. And so he's all dressed up, but the rest of us are somewhere.
I guess I'm in trouble now.
In between that. But I say that with all honesty, you're being compared all across, but when I turn to get Channel 10 and I just left Channel 11, I don't be, you know, I'm just saying, okay, we're looking at TV and, and so not, not saying, you know, any less preparation. Also, it would be interesting to make sure that all of the departments get a chance to be seen on TV and say something about what they do. I have to admit.
That's a big part of what we do.
And I, well, I have to admit that maybe I don't watch Channel 10 enough, but I think about that sometimes, that all the departments, you know, get a shot at seeing what they do. I will, and it must be coincidental. A lot of time what I see is the young lady who's doing the cooking down the extension.
Michelle.
I mean, huh?
Michelle.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I usually see most of the time. Maybe I just happened to turn it on at that time, but I'm talking about all, what we got, about 35 or 40 different departments? So we need to let the public see all of them.
Yes, sir. That is definitely part of what we do because that tells what Wayne County is.
And when you get a chance to.
Yes.
I would, when you get a chance to reach out to some of the citizens, just, just citizens in the community who you might, I don't know what kind of scale, would you determine what the most interesting citizens would be, but people who are in charge of companies or agencies or something like that.
One of our big new projects that we're going to run out is a day in the life of, where we're traveling with departments. We're doing facilities right now, which has been a massive. Our first one was OES with the EMS, so it actually coincided with EMS Week. And so that's really one thing that we're trying to spotlight is those departments because we have great people working across the county. We should be able to highlight them on the channel. And we are working a lot right now with a lot of the, you know, the city organizations that are reaching out to the youth to keep them off the streets and things like that and doing interviews and talking about their programs and stuff in the summertime too. So trying to get a little bit more of that community-focused programming as well.
And Joel also and Bria did a great job. They set up a kind of a press conference to talk about the budget. And has that shown you?
Yeah, we have segments of it running.
Okay, yeah. So they really doing things a little bit different than we've done in the past and I just appreciate working with.
Well, they did a whole lot then, didn't they?
It was great.
Yes, sir.
What I would like to see is a state of the county once a month by our county manager.
It's a great idea.
Be glad to.
And we actually do have, we did have, we, I don't know the last time we did it, but we've had a little fun with staffing. But we have actually had, we have the chairman's corner and a talk with the county manager, I think it is. So, but we'll make sure it's on once a month.
And you might want to, other than just having me on all the time, is to bring some of these others.
Well, you know, that was my goal at one point was to actually have a very casual conversation with all of you, a little different than, and we may still do that.
Because, you know, a lot of us serve on different boards and they could talk about that, that kind of thing where they are. Maybe being a chair at DSS and that kind of, I'm just giving you some.
Nothing. Great ideas.
I like that idea.
Great idea.
Instead of looking at my face every time, you know.
Any questions for Carol?
She did a good job. She cut it, I'm happy.
Okay, thank you.
Last but not least, December's middle, we can get out of this.
Every now and then.
We ain't got but one page. We ain't going to get a whole lot.
Had a feeling.
You know, Andrew, I was thinking today, you were sitting out there in them hard seats. You should have been sitting up here with board seats.
They tried to get me up there all for the last two days. I'll sit back.
Well, you still got a young buddy, Rock. I can remember there wasn't even a cushion out there.
That's what Allison said.
It was tough. It was tough.
Get him a name plate, mate. So you can set it.
Let us say with Andrew's budget that we only had maybe two months, two and a half months worth of data to even work with this budget on, so.
And just the foreclosure process, it's, everything was so new since we brought it in-house. Everything was being outsourced to Philip Bedore's office. So it really took us, I would say, I would say two and a half months, but we're still doing it, just realizing how we need to budget and how we need to run everything through. So.
You're in the classifieds every time I look at it. I see the foreclosures going on.
So just to plug, usually the fourth Monday of every month is when we have our sales. We shoot for like six or seven, so unless there's a holiday.
You get a lot of revenue to the news august.
But just starting just briefly on the advertising filing fees, sheriff's service fees, ideally, those are going to be revenue neutral. So there should be a corresponding revenue code that's always going to balance those out. That's not always going to happen. Because if we sell these properties, if we get all the way to a foreclosure, some of them just aren't very valuable. Maybe the house has been demolished or something like that. It's going to revert to county and city ownership if it's jointly owned by the county and city. So the county is just going to have to eat those funds. We do split those costs with the city if it's a municipality. So it won't always be revenue neutral. For the sheriff fees, our sheriff does not charge us for serving defendants. We've already cleared that up. That would just be out of county defendants. So that should be very minimal. I don't even think we would get that high on those calls. And ideally, we would get all those back once we sell it, sell the property because all the opening bid includes all the costs, all the attorney's fees, everything like that associated with it.
And I just want to thank you for all the other work that you're doing for us too, because my idea was, this was going to be a full-time job just doing that, but you really made it up a step in and helped us out. And I know you.
Well, we started.
Enjoyed a lot of the fun we've had.
We've, we started moving a lot faster when Catherine came on board. And I know nobody really sees her that much because we're down in the office, but she has helped a lot. Usually, once I get everything ready to go, I can just give it to her and she just takes off with it. And she gets it exactly where it needs to go. So I have some numbers on where we're at right now, but we kind of did a rough estimate. All the files that we've kind of closed out to this point is somewhere in the neighborhood of 81 to 90, or 85 to 90, somewhere in there. Right now, we've got 18 pending actions. That's 24 parcels. We've already sold, gone to foreclosure sale on another 23. 13 of those were from Philip Bedore's office that we took over and finished those out to try to push those along. We've had nine people actually declare bankruptcy, so we weren't able to close those out. I think word's getting around that we're moving a little bit faster on foreclosures, so people know the bankruptcy secret at this point.
Are they starting to pay up at that point to keep from losing?
Uh, no, they just declared bankruptcy.
Oh, okay.
So there's some nuances of that, but, and then we've had another about a dozen that actually come up and pay out or redeem them right away once we filed the lawsuit, which is easy money to the county because we immediately get those attorney's fees. So all told, it's in the 80 to low 90 range right now.
One of the questions that just strikes me that I've just got to ask, and that is line item 391003. What attorney are you hiring for?
That will be probably nothing. The reason why we had to create that expenditure, we took over, I said, we sold about 13 from Philip Bedore's office. He actually got a judgment on those properties and we sold, sold them for him. So we get a commissioner's fee out of that for our work, but he earned all the attorney's fees. So we had to create an expenditure for those because he's already closed those out. So we had to pay attorney's fees.
I just didn't want us to hire an attorney to look after the attorney.
The one thing, the one thing that might come up with some of our bankruptcy cases, a lot of people, we foreclose on several times and they file multiple times. If it's something that Alan and I think is worthwhile, we might actually. that Alan and I think is worthwhile, we might actually hire a bankruptcy attorney to go to court. I know Helen Bedore's done that before with one particular person, so, but that should not even touch the 6,500, I don't even think it would be, it might be zero.
Have we done any budgeting as revenue for those properties next year that you're foreclosing on?
It's on your sheet.
It is on my sheet.
Yes, on the sheet.
What sheet? You give me too many sheets.
The sheet with the adjustments.
The sheet with the adjustments?
Yes.
Really?
And she is gonna break the attorney fees out on the schedule that's in your budget. I think, Mr. Daughter, you had asked about that, so that'll probably be like in your final budget.
At the time we did that report, did he have any information on it?
Who came up with that? You're only projecting a revenue of $35,900? Let me tell you something, you better produce more than that.
No, it will not be that. We've already, we've already got more. I think we didn't have any figures up until February, because these codes didn't even exist until February, just because I had filed some new actions, Philip Bedore still had some files, and then we were still waiting for payment from the tax office, from people who paid it off, so we didn't even have any projections in February, so that's extremely far off.
Well, next year, we'll have them, so that we can bunch.
You talking about hiring an attorney to, to look after the attorney? We've already done that, we had to hire Andrew to look at the court.
I hear you.
But one thing I'll say is, you know, we're getting all those taxes back, hopefully, you know, the back pay taxes, so you'll see a benefit in that. And a plug, we were having to pay an outside attorney that money, so if you really think of it that way, you were in the hole per parcel, about $750, it's money you don't have to pay, that we're actually passing on to the property owner, so, just think of it that way, it's staying in-house, so hopefully, I'll pay for myself, and then...
Well, that's the whole, my plan was in front of me, anyway. Anything else for Andrew?
Yes, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
What else we need to talk about, or we're ready to go?
We're good right now. What we have heard over the last couple of days is there will be, we need to go back as staff and compile some of the changes. As Board is aware, the, there may be a fix on the low-well formula, so that was $800,000 that we had plugged in to help cover that school shortfall.
And if I could, let me interrupt you.
Okay.
I think we all need a attaboy that we give, thank you to Representative John Bell, who is working on this issue.
Very much.
Because it was a budget buster, and I know he's worked hard for it, and we want to definitely send him a nice thank you. So, maybe, Carol, you can send a real thank you to Representative Bell for fixing that, because actually, in the budget, they did change, I don't know, I think a wise man said that some years ago, just changed the number from 23 to 17.
The AM numbers to military community.
Right, right, so that actually wording is in there, so I think we...
If you talk to Representative John Bell thanking for me, because I get a lot of calls thanking me.
So, we don't care as long as we get it, John.
But you know, that was, you know, when we originally went through the manager's recommended budget, there was a proposed tax increase in there, we have had some changes to the budget. I don't know if staff will have ready a final recommendation before our public hearing Tuesday. You know, we'll work on some of the summary changes, but we may have to have another workshop after our meeting to kind of wrap this up before you approve it.
And add on what he said about Representative Bell, there's some other things he's working on, too, that we don't know how exactly it's gonna play out yet, which could be some very meaningful dollars to Wayne County.
Yes, sir. So, but, you know, it is huge, right down, you know, and some of the cuts we've made, and especially the 800, is, you know, it really changes the complexion of our budget.
And Representative Bell also, he's not just, I mean, he's helped Wayne County a lot, but he represents Eastern North Carolina, especially the district that he was elected in, but he, he works hard for Eastern North Carolina. I mean, he's done a fantastic job for us, but we got, you know, we got to give him credit for what he does in other counties also.
Yes, sir.
Craig, I'd like to say this, in writing this budget and getting it together, out of all the years that I've worked with Commissioner Dougherty, you stuck it to him this time, he couldn't find the...
Well, and let me go back and say, that was really, one of the things...
That was your goal?
No, no. Yes. No, no, when we had our discussion with staff at the beginning of this budget year, we knew that this was gonna be a tight year, you know, we were thinking school issues and supplements and all these type things. Staff really did a good job when they came in with their original request, and, you know, and I appreciated Mel Powers today, Mel saying where he could cut back and not need some capital. There's not many department heads that say that I, please cut me $175,000, $180,000 piece of capital. So, it really is a truly team effort, and I do want to thank Janice and Allison for the work that they've done, and just the entire finance team. Chip and Ryan sat in on a lot of the budget meetings as well, appreciate the work that they've done, so it really was a good process. I think Commissioner Gurley had a great idea, getting the CIP done early really made this a much smoother process, I think, so we'll try to do that again next year.
And I was gonna say one other thing, well, Representative John Bell did a great job. Our whole legislative team has worked hard for Wayne County, so I think Larry Bell, I think Dixon...
I want y'all to do one thing for me, go ahead and tell me that I was right, that I should've, y'all should've approved my motion.
Ain't arguing with you. Next year.
I read my book, and I knew what was in there.
He did. Mr. Chairman, I do want to remind everyone that there are some increases that we're gonna be faced with. I mean, I think DSS, I think we all see, we're looking at a little over a half a million dollars, $550,000 in increased funding coming from the county. We are gonna see a half a million dollars that is desperately needed on the half cent, half percent increase in teacher supplements. We are looking at the resource officers, I don't know what that final number is, but that's gonna impact us. We also have MBRAC that's coming online, that wasn't online last year, and that's about $680,000 coming from our budget. So, we are still got, I don't know how you're gonna put it all together, I look forward to whatever you finally come up with.
Like I said, we still have that $2 million bridge on our debt service this year.
You're right.
That never ends next year?
I think 1-7 comes off in debt next year.
In 19, we have, the bulk of it comes off in 18, 19, and then I think the next year we have another few hundred thousand that comes off.
But it's, I knew we were getting very close to it.
But we'll package it up.
You'll package it all up?
We'll package it up.
Before we adjourn, I do have the 50/50 tickets for Wayne County to collect now.
Is that what these things are that I gotta, where did they go?
Yeah, you already cut yours, yeah, but I'll save you some more.
No, what did I do with them things? I just had, did you take my 50 tickets or what?
Where adjourned?